I have been informed that if anyone is suffering from heat exhaustion, we do have some cooling stations that are in the back. No, not really. I'll do a couple of quick announcements before we open the meeting. One of the announcements is with the Health Department. And I've been notified by the Health Department that this coming week, there are many appointments that are available if you wish to get the vaccines. The vaccines, I say plural because they have both Moderna and Pfizer. And if you want to do that, contact the Health Department and you can schedule that. There's also information about that at the water table over, just at the entranceway to the field. Remember, anyone over the age of 16 is eligible to make an appointment and have the vaccine. By the way, the clinics will be taking place at the Doubletree in Westboro. It is a joint community effort. Okay, let's get started. If everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance, the flag is in the rear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Just a few opening comments as far as what's going on. Represented at the tables behind me would be members of the Board of Selectmen and the Appropriations Committee. Also, we have a few other comments. Meeting is a culmination of many, many hours of hard work by many people, members of the administration, board members, committees, and commissions. That's an effort that took place probably several days after our last town meeting. Remember, this is your meeting. My job is to make sure that we go through the articles in the warrant in an orderly fashion and that the debate and discussion is fair and balanced. If you have not already done so, please silence your mobile phones. Or there will be a severe tax penalty. Please wait to be recognized before speaking. There are two microphone stations located where the orange pylons are in the aisle. Please come to the microphone and when you're recognized, you may speak. While we may not agree on every subject, it's important to remember that we all live in this community and will continue to do so after this meeting. So, we're doing this together. For those of you that are new to town meeting, there's a good resource put together by the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth. It's a citizen's guide to town meetings and it's available on the Northborough Town website. Are there any people new to the town meeting process here this morning? Please raise your hands. Congratulations, thank you. Let's do a practice vote. When you checked in, you got a card? We have our cards here. We are going to vote. All those in favor of having outdoor meetings in the month of February, please raise your cards. And those opposed, okay? The motion carries, or does not carry, I should say. A few additional announcements is, as you have been notified as you came in, masks are required at all times. Because this is a meeting or an event and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has determined that we should be wearing our masks, we need to be wearing our masks at all times. Speakers at microphones may remove their masks. Copies, if you have not already received them, are available in the check-in area. And the seating has been arranged to be 10 feet apart. Unless you are in your own little bubble of people, I'd like to have you please maintain that distance. As you notice, the aisles are fairly wide. And ask that we don't block those aisles for two reasons. Number one, for emergency reasons, but also should there need to be a count by the tellers that they have a better feel for what area they're covering. Restrooms. We have restrooms located right down here to this building and also we have porta-potties at this end. Before we begin, I'd like to ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to please come forward and make some announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jason Perot, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Each year at town meeting, we normally recognize volunteers who have served on town boards, committees, or commissions and, for whatever reason, are discontinuing their service. So I'd just like to go down the list and make the acknowledgement for these people, we appreciate their contributions. Community Affairs Committee, Lisa Hodge, 17 years. Cultural Council, Heidi Knight, three years. Earthwork Board, Fred Philcox, 17 years. Industrial Development Commission, Mark Donahue, 28 years. And Budinath Patti, 24 years. Board of Library Trustees, Jocelyn McElhany, five years. Scholarship Committee, Marjorie Marks, 15 years. And Kelly Moran, 13 years. Board of Selectmen, Tim Kalin, three years. And Zoning Board of Appeals alternate, Leslie Harrison, three years. If you could just give a little bit of applause for those people, thank you. There are two other people we'd like to acknowledge. Elaine Kelly, 23 years on the Appropriations Committee. Elaine has a very long record of service in the town. In the past, she had served on the Northborough School Committee, the Algonquin Regional School Committee, and the Assavet School Committee. That was just a precursor for her service on appropriations where Elaine was certainly known for her discerning eye and critical questioning of items relating to finances. She was certainly a very strong contributor and we just want to acknowledge and appreciate her long record of service. Elaine's not able to be here today, but again, if you could give me a round of applause for Elaine. And the final person we want to recognize today, Claire Swan, 18 years on the Board of Registriars. I'd like to ask Town Clerk Andy Dowd to come up and speak about Claire.
Thank you, Jason. Claire, as Jason just said, served as a member of the Board of Registriars for 18 years. But she was a contributor and resident of the community for more than 65 years and she really leaves a lasting legacy. Sadly, Claire passed away at the end of March, but she lived a long, full life. She was 87 and vibrant and engaged right up until the very end and still involved in the community. Claire always had a warm smile and a kind word for those that she met during her very active life. She was always dressed to perfection. You may have seen her at this meeting, oftentimes she'd be helping count the votes. Her late husband, Parker, was our moderator for many years. She was known for those colorful outfits and her accessories always beautifully coordinated. And as her family said perfectly in her obituary, "She could rock the bright colored lipstick." Just seeing Claire would make you smile. Claire and her late husband, Parker, made Northborough a better place and we're forever grateful for that. So, thank you for allowing me a moment to remember Claire.
Thank you. And now we begin the process of working through the warrant. This year, as in last year, we have introduced the concept of the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is easily explained by looking at many articles that are sometimes referred to as housekeeping articles or articles that have not been contested in any way, shape, or form. And this year, on the Consent Agenda, I have recommended that we include four articles. In your book, and I will not read the articles for this meeting, but in your book, I am referring to, for the Consent Agenda, Article One, Appointment of Deputy Moderator. Article Two, Authorizing Compensating Balance Agreements. Article Three, Prior Year's Bills. And Article Nine, Authorize Revolving Fund Limits for FY 2022. What I will do is I will read off the names of each of these articles. And if anyone in the meeting wishes to have that taken out of the Consent Agenda, then they should stand up and say, "Hold." And we will discuss that one further. If there are no requests to hold any of the articles, once we've gone through the four articles, then we will make one vote that will include acceptance of all those articles or non-acceptance of all those articles. I'm assuming that it should be straightforward and clear to everyone once we begin the process. Are there any questions before we begin? Seeing no questions, question? Yes, thank you so much. I go to the House of Hutchins. Any other questions? Hearing none, this is the Consent Agenda. Article One, Appointment of the Deputy Moderator. Article Two, Authorizing Compensating Balancing Agreements. Number Three, Prior Year's Bills. And Article Nine, Authorize Revolving Fund Limits for fiscal year 2022. I heard no holds on any of those, so we'll move forward and vote on the Consent Agenda. All those in favor of Consent Agenda One, please raise your cards. And those opposed, the Consent Agenda One has passed. We now are moving to Article Four.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes?
I moved the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of $22,728,572 for town government as displayed in the warrant supplement distributed at this town meeting. And to meet said appropriation, the following sums available for appropriation be transferred. From, transfer from Cemetery Trust Fund Income, $19,495. Transfer from Cemetery Sale of Lots, $12,000. Transfer from Debt Exclusion Premium Reserve, $9,835. Transfer from DPU Transportation Fund, $3,587. Transfer from Conservation Commission... May I continue?
I think we're going to have to order another tent.
Transfer from Conservation Committee Fees, $8,523. Transfer from Fire Emergency Medical Services Revolving Fund, $351,240. Transfer from Animal Control Revolving Fund, $27,461. Transfer from Medicare Part D Subsidy, $39,039. Transfer from Peg Access Cable Related Fund, $262,753. Free Cash, $500,000. For a total of $1,233,933. And that the sum of $21,494,639 be raised by taxation.
Second?
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there a presentation?
I was just commenting in the back there how it would be nice to be standing in the sun, so that worked out quite well, actually. This past year has been like no other that we've experienced as a community, both socially and financially. It's worth mentioning, fiscal '21, the year that we're in right now, we're about ready to wrap up. The last time we met in this field, it was July 18th, three months late. State budget was completed six months late. We had immense unknown and uncertainty with regard to what was happening with the economy and what was happening frankly with our world at the moment. I'm happy to say that we wrapped up fiscal, or ultimately we settled fiscal '21 in a very positive way. We took a very conservative approach to our budget. We made a few moves, we postponed a little bit of capital, and we put a little bit of extra money into our emergency reserve fund to get through whatever might happen. I'm pleased to say, ultimately, the state came through and because of the federal aid that came in, we actually were held harmless. And we were planning for a 17% cut in state aid. I'm just wondering if we get hit by that tent. So, we never saw that reduction in state aid. We also were planning for a 14% cut in local receipts, things like motor vehicle excise, building permits, meals and hotel taxes. Ultimately, as you know, the economy wound up opening up in phases and shut down fully for a period of time. When we held our town meeting, everything was locked down. We had no idea what was going to happen and we took a very conservative approach to our budget. At the end of the day, in November, when the final tax rate was set, state aid came in healthy. We chose as a community, a policy decision by the Board, not to have a special town meeting to spend those meeting to spend those extra funds. And ultimately, what happened when we set the tax rate is, instead of a $250, $260 increase, the board was able to provide tax relief to all the residents and businesses in town. The average single-family home tax bill actually went down in this fiscal year by $65. So, again, conservative budgeting, good planning, excellent policies, and great execution on the part of the boards and committees meant that '21 turned out to be much better than we had anticipated. Now, moving to fiscal 2022, a couple of assumptions that we're making. The governor's released his budget on January 27th, and under that budget, again, with additional federal aid kind of backfilling and propping up the federal, the state budget, we're looking at a 1.6% increase. We could have just as easily been looking at a decrease again this year, but it didn't materialize. Local receipts, we thought it was going to be a fourteen percent reduction, again, at the time the entire county moved shut down. Our local receipts are actually going to be going up from that reduction. We're planning on about an eight-point-seven percent increase in our local receipts. So, that's all good news for us. What it means is it stabilized the fiscal 2022 budget. Now, a couple of things that we aren't doing, we aren't putting money aside for our OPEB Trust Fund. We anticipate getting back on track with that next year. The bottom line on our fiscal '22 budget, if you turn to page twenty-eight in the warrant booklet, you can see all of the line items and the revenues and the summaries. And essentially, what we have is, across all the budgets that you're going to be hearing from, the K-8 schools, the Algonquin Regional High School, Asbit Valley, and the general government budget, which is what you're voting on right now under Article Four. These are level service budgets that are designed to maintain the current level of services that we're providing. There's nothing extraordinary going on, there's no, we're just still trying to get through the impacts of COVID-19, the pandemic. We do have federal aid coming. There's not a whole lot of information surrounding exactly what we're going to be able to spend that on and how that can be used, but the good news is, just like last year when I stood up here before you, our budget as presented and currently put together is viable exactly the way it is, with or without any additional state aid or federal assistance. If and when that does come through, it will only act to reduce the tax impact, very similar to what we experienced in fiscal 2021. At this point, with our fiscal 2022 budget, we are looking at a tax impact that is going to be below the limits of Prop. 2.5. Under Prop. 2.5, every year, we're able to go up, you know, two-and-a-half percent in terms of the tax levy. The town has been very conservative in their budgeting. We have excess levy capacity, which means we have not taxed to the limits of Prop. 2.5. We have $3.4 million in levy capacity. Under the proposed fiscal 2022 budget, that levy capacity will actually go up to $4 million. Again, it's because very conservative budgeting, we're holding and constraining expenses. We want to make sure that Northborough remains affordable, but at the same time, and you'll hear it from presenter after presenter, from the school superintendent and the Asbit School Superintendent, that we are maintaining services, and we're giving our police, our fire, and everybody the resources that they need to do with the job that they want to do. So, the budget is minimal in terms of tax impact. It supports the core services. We, at this point, are using no financial reserves. Fiscal '21, we brought a little bit of free cash into the operating budget because we weren't sure what was going to happen with the pandemic and lost revenues. We're off that one-time extra money from reserves in the budget. So, fiscal 2022 is not relying on any reserves. Recurring revenues are going to support the recurring services that you've come to enjoy. And then, last but not least, as you'll see through other articles that we'll be discussing down the warrant, we continue to make regular investments in our equipment, our buildings, and our infrastructure. So, we're not playing any games, we're not kicking the can, there's no one-time Enron accounting or gimmicks in this budget. It's a solid budget based on solid, comprehensive financial policies that all the boards and committees have agreed to, and that's why we were able to weather this pandemic. Unlike many other communities, when the pandemic hit, they could not set a budget, and they were reducing services, and they were in a panic. Our boards and committees knew exactly what we were going to do because we had agreed upon policies, and we knew exactly what our moves were going to be so that we could have a balanced budget. And then, ultimately, as I said, this budget for 2021, the year we're in now, came through with tax relief. We were in a position to provide tax relief on top of everything else. So, again, level service budget, core services are sustained, and I hope that you support this budget. The last thing I'll say is that this budget has the unanimous support of all the boards and committees. So, it has been vetted, and it is a success story about how to work together. Many organizations do okay in good times. When things go wrong, and they're bad, that's when you find out whether or not you have a good system, and whether or not you have good relationships, and people understand the principles on which you're going to operate. I'm happy to say today, that worked flawlessly in the town of Northborough, and it's going to play forward in fiscal 2022, and I hope you support this budget. I'm sorry, one more thing before I get off the microphone. I just want to acknowledge all the volunteers in our community that put their time and effort into keeping up our community spirit, making sure that anybody that had any food or insecurities or needs were met. Every senior in this town, if some of you are in the audience right now, you got one, two, maybe three phone calls throughout this service to ask you, "Are you okay? Do you need anything? How can we help?" The coordination, the cooperation, there has been zero friction between the boards, zero friction between the administration and the school department and the superintendent's office. Everybody has worked well together. Right now, I just read a statistic on my way walking up to this microphone, that the town of Northborough leads the Worcester County in the number of people that are vaccinated. We're at over seventy percent. That's incredible. I want to acknowledge Fire Department, the Health Department, DPW, all the admin staff that put together those clinics. We led the charge, and we are leading the charge right now on a regional clinic to make sure everybody gets what they need. So, I just couldn't be more proud of this organization and how we weathered this storm. As I said, everybody's okay and things go smoothly when everything is good. You find out what kind of an organization you have and what kind of relationships you have when things go bad. It could not have been any worse, and we could not have fared any better. So, thank you to all of you, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions, debate on Article Four? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on, and I will do an abbreviated description because you have your booklets, you can see the entire motion. And the motion says that the town will raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of, and the grand total of that sum is, oh, good Lord, I just lost it, is $21,494,639, and that will be raised by taxation. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, Article Four passes. Before we move on, I was reminded by our town clerk that I was so excited about starting the meeting that I actually overlooked the return of the warrant to the work that the constables in Northborough have done. So, I'm required to read this. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, "To either of the constables of the town of Northborough in and said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby commanded to warn and notify the legal voters of the town of Northborough to meet at Algonquin Regional High School, 79 Bartlett Street, in said town, on Saturday, May 1st, in the year 2021, at 9:00 a.m., to act upon the following articles of the town meeting warrant. Hereof fail not, and make due return of this warrant by your doings thereon to the town clerk at or before the time of said meeting. Given under our hands at Northborough on Monday, this 22nd day of March, in the year 2021, it is signed by the members of the Board of Selectmen, it is attested to by the town clerk, and the return of services attested to by the town clerk and one of the constables." Thank you. Article Five.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here this morning. Article Five, "I move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of $6,254,279 for the operation of the water, sewer, and solid waste utilities in the amounts of $2,961,675 for the Water Enterprise Fund, $2,373,460 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and $919,144 for the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. And to meet said appropriation, the following sums available for appropriation be transferred from. Water fund free cash, $316,548. Solid waste fund free cash, $93,984. Raise and appropriate by taxation, solid waste general fund subsidy, $337,160. For a total of $747,692, and that the sum of $5,506,587 be financed from water, sewer, and solid waste revenues and allocated as stated."
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
The water, sewer, and solid waste budgets are enterprise funds as authorized by state statute. These provide separate accounting and financial mechanisms for municipal services for which a fee is charged. This allows the community to demonstrate to the public the portion of total costs of the service that is recovered through user charges and the portion that is subsidized by the tax levy, if there is any. I'm going to present the proposed budgets for the water, sewer enterprise funds, and then our town engineer, Fred Litchfield, will come up and present the proposed budget for the solid waste enterprise fund. The Water Enterprise Fund, on average, the town of Northborough uses approximately 900,000 gallons of water per day. We purchase this entirely from the MWRA. Our water system includes an interconnection with the authority off Bartlett Street, two water storage tanks, and four inactive drinking water wells. The water system serves approximately eighty percent of the residents in town, and the remaining properties are served by private wells. The proposed FY 22 Water Enterprise Fund operating budget is $2,961,675. This is a $360,705 increase over FY 21, with thirteen-point-nine percent. This increase is largely attributed, ninety-five percent of it is attributed to the MWRA assessment increase of approximately $346,000 this year. This increase is due to the substantial shift of Metro Boston's water use being shifted to suburban bedroom communities due to the shutdowns during the pandemic. Our expectation is that our rates will stabilize as businesses reopen in the Metro West area. The rates projected for FY 22 are expected to increase by between four and five percent, but that will be based on a formal rate study that will be conducted in June and July of this year. Approximately thirty percent of Northborough has access to the town wastewater collection system. Our system includes nine municipal pump stations, and we discharge all of our flow to the Westerly Wastewater Treatment Plant located in Marlborough. The proposed FY 22 Sewer Enterprise Fund operating budget is $2,373,460. This represents an increase of $77,166, which equates to three-point-four percent over the FY 21 budget. This budget includes an estimated increase to the Marlborough use charge of $38,726. The remainder of the increase is attributed solely to contractual increases through our operations. Northborough's share of the $30 million Marlborough Treatment Plant improvements and our share of their operating costs remains uncertain again this year due to the continuing legal proceedings related to a new intermunicipal agreement with the city of Marlborough. Anticipating significant increases to our payments in Marlborough, we've instituted a series of rate adjustments over the past years. Considering the rate adjustments that is proposed on the water system, we're proposing a zero percent rate increase for the sewer division this year. That's going to be pending completion of a detailed rate study that will be done again in June and July of this year. Be happy to answer any questions anyone has on the water and sewer enterprise funds, or I'll have Fred Litchfield, our town engineer, come up and discuss the solid waste enterprise
Thank you, Scott. Good morning. The Solid Waste Enterprise Fund involves the administration of two separate contracts, a collection contract which requires curbside collection and disposal of recyclable materials every other week, and for the curbside collection and delivery to wheel operator for the weekly solid waste. The total fiscal year 2022 solid waste budget as proposed is $919,144. This represents 5.2% increase over last year's, and this increase is primarily due to an increase in volume and the disposal cost of yard waste. In fiscal year 2022, the appropriation again contains a $10,000 contingency reserve account to ensure funding for potential of any unforeseen costs. In 2015, the disposal contract with the wheel operator facility in Milbury was renegotiated, providing a very favorable agreement and the lower tipping costs, thereby reducing long-term costs. The total fee revenues in fiscal year 2022 are estimated to be stable again at $488,000, and the projected general fund subsidy is $337,160, along with a transfer from the solid waste free, fund-free cash of $93,984, which allows us to reach the total fiscal year 2022 solid waste budget of $919,144. And I'd also be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, any debate on Article Five? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on, and I will abbreviate this. Article Five is outlined in detail on page four of your warrant manual or warrant book. But the motion is, "I move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of $6,254,279 for the operation of water, sewer, and solid waste utilities." And a breakdown of those individual amounts is outlined on page four of your booklet. All those in favor, please raise your hands, your cards. And those opposed, Article Five passes.
Mr. Moderator. Article Six, "I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation the sum of $25, 799,678 for the operation of the Northborough K-8 Public Schools."
The motion has been made and seconded. Do we have a presentation?
Good morning. The Northborough School Committee is committed to providing an exceptional educational experience for all students in a cost-effective manner. The district believes that the strong partnerships with parents, the community, and the town government are essential in developing a fiscally responsible and educationally sound school budget. In June of 2020, the school committee approved a new strategic plan, Vision 2026. The plan identifies five strategic objectives, empowering learners, equity of... The plan identifies five strategic objectives: empowering learners, equity of opportunity, healthy and balanced learners, and educator learning and leadership. The school committee utilized the new plan to develop budget priorities. It used the mission and vision of the district as guiding principles throughout the budget process to create a budget that supports an exceptional education for all students. The Northborough Pre-K through Eight Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-two School Committee Recommended Budget is twenty-five million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars, which represents a two point four seven increase over fiscal year twenty-one. The budget reflects a level services budget with growth area in four targeted areas: a tuition-free kindergarten. Over the past three years, the district has worked toward implementing tuition-free, full-day kindergarten. The FY twenty-two School Committee budget achieves the goal, and if approved by the taxpayers, kindergarten will be tuition-free for all families this fall. Instructional resources and professional learning. The budget includes materials for history and social science, as the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is implementing, implementing new student learning outcomes and history. Translation services. The community of Northborough is becoming more diverse, and as a result, the district is increasing its translation of documents and interpretation of meetings. And lastly, instructional capacity to support teaching and learning. To build coherence of teaching and learning across the district's five schools, the School Committee Recommended Budget includes funding a halftime ELA coordinator, a halftime K-8 math coordinator, and a point four social-emotional learning coordinator. I believe the budget before you is a sound and fiscally responsible budget, and I appreciate the time, and thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, any debate on Article Seven? Article Six, please. Hearing none, and that is outlined on page four of your booklet if you haven't seen it yet. This is what we will be voting on for Article Six. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation the sum of twenty-five million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred, uh, seventy-eight dollars for the operation of the Northborough K-8 Public Schools. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, Article Six passes. Article Seven, Algonquin Regional High School Budget.
Good morning, everybody. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation Northborough's share of the assessment for the operation and debt service of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District, the sum of thirteen million, six hundred, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Second.
And at this, at this time, I'd like to make the present, uh, turn the mic over to our superintendent of schools Greg Martino for the presentation.
Just wanted to acknowledge that the motion had been made and seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Martino.
The Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee is committed to providing an excellent education to the youth of the two towns in a cost-effective manner. In alignment with the Northborough Pre-K through Eight School Committee, the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee also approved a new strategic plan, Vision two thousand twenty-six, in the spring of last year. The committee utilized the new plan to develop budget priorities. It also used the mission and vision of the district as guiding principles throughout the budget process to create a budget that supports an exceptional education for all students. The Northborough-Southborough Regional School District Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-two School Committee Recommended Budget is twenty-four million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, which is a three point five percent increase over fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Northborough's share of the assessment, operations and debt, is thirteen million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars, which represents a three point two eight percent increase. The FY twenty-two budget reflects a level services budget with growth in three targeted areas: instructional resources and professional learning, translation services, and instructional capacity to support social-emotional learning. I believe the budget before you is educationally and fiscally responsible, and I thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, any debate on Article Seven? Yes, please. By the way, Article Seven is detailed on page five of your booklet.
Good morning. Just a quick question on the budget, both for this year and potentially upcoming. When are the turf fields and the track updates accounted for in, in the budget? Or are they this year?
Sir, may we have your name and address, please?
Sure. David Roman, thirty-four Woodstone.
So, so thank you for the question. The turf field and stadium are not included in this year's budget. We do have a five-to-seven-year capital plan, which outlines, I believe, the turf field in twenty-five and twenty-six as a project to be considered by the town of, of Northborough.
Can I add a couple of points, I think, for folks in, in the audience? I don't think they're well-known, or is this not the appropriate time?
Does it pertain to this particular article?
Well, not this article, I guess, the topic that I'm, I'm asking for additional clarification.
If, I would prefer that we maintain focus on this article right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, any other debate? Not seeing any. This is what we're voting on for Article Seven. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation Northborough's share of the assessment of the operation and debt service of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District, the sum of thirteen million, six hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars. Again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, Article Seven passes. Article Eight, Assabett Valley Regional Vocational School District Budget by Virginia Sims George.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation Northborough's share of the assessment for the operation and debt service of the Assabett Regional Vocational School District, the sum of one million, sixty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. Thank you.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by Ernest Hool, Superintendent of the Assabett Valley Regional School.
Morning, thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. Like to thank town administrator John Codere, town officials, and lastly, your Northborough representative to the school committee and chair of the Assabett Valley School Committee, Ms. Virginia Sims George. We've provided some budget books which outline our mission and educational goals that support Assabett this year. We've been very fortunate to have one hundred percent of in-person learning for our technical programs this year, and eighty percent of our academics have been done in a remote fashion. This past year has been challenging for everyone, and developing this budget was no less daunting. But we remain mindful of the fiscal responsibility that we have to our member communities. This year's overall budget is a level service-funded budget with a overall two point nine seven percent increase this year, and Northborough's assessment of its increase is directly tied to an increase of six students enrolling at Assabett from the previous year, and the capital assessment that's due. We thank town officials and the resident of Northborough for the continued support of Assabett and the high-quality career in technical education that supports the students in our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or debate on Article Eight? Not hearing any. Article Eight is detailed on page five of your booklet. The motion is, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation Northborough's share of assessment for the operation and debt service of the Assabett Valley Regional Vocational School District, the sum of one million, sixty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars, four hundred ninety dollars. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed, Article Eight passes. Article Ten, please. The Appropriation Committee Reserve Fund.
Good morning, everybody. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for a reserve fund to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Six, to meet said appropriation. One hundred seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Codere.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, this is another little bit of a success story for us. So, the emergency reserve fund is allowed under state statute for us to have this fund so that in the course of the year, if something happens relatively minor, but larger than is in the operating budget, that we can address it. It could be a storm, it could be a mold issue, it could be a special education issue. Those are things that we've used these funds for in the past. In fiscal twenty-one, the year that we're in right now, we chose to postpone a couple of capital projects, some equipment, and we were able to do that because we make regular investment in our, in our infrastructure and our equipment. So delaying one year isn't going to be a hardship. We delayed one year, and we put extra money in this reserve account. This, again, is for fiscal twenty-one, the year that we're in right now. So there was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that account because we weren't sure what was going to happen with the pandemic. I'm happy to say, as of standing here today, we have not used any of that money, and we don't think we're going to need any of that money to deal with any of the effects of the pandemic. The nice thing, and the reason why I'm going through this explanation for you, is we know how we're going to react when things go bad. We're not guessing, we're not fighting, we're not wondering. We knew immediately, we're going to delay some projects, we're going to increase our emergency reserve in case we need it, and then the best-case scenario happened, we didn't need it. But, so that money never gets spent, it came from free cash, it'll flow back to free cash. Now, the article that's before you today is for one hundred seventy-five thousand, that emergency reserve fund, that's the amount that we typically put aside. It's controlled by the appropriations committee and used in a manner so that we don't need to call a special town meeting just to deal with a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar storm overdraft or something like that. So, again, everything works the way it was supposed to. The good news is, we inflated this emergency refund in fiscal twenty-one. What's before you today for two thousand twenty-two is back to the one hundred seventy-five thousand, and again, if that money is not used, it simply stays in and rolls back to free cash.
Thank you. Any questions or debate on Article Ten? Not seeing any. This is what we're voting on for Article Ten, and that's outlined on page six of your booklet. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for a reserve fund to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Six, and to meet said appropriation, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, Article, Article Ten passes. Article Eleven. Before we do that, Mr. Codere, would you like to make an overall presentation?
Yes, just, just a, a couple of words to, to prep. So every year, the town updates its six-year capital improvement plan. So this is every bit of equipment, infrastructure, building improvements that we're going to make. We update that plan every year. The first year of it is the capital budget, and the capital budget this year consists of Articles eleven through nineteen. And what I want you to know is that, under the town's capital planning process and procedure, we use one-time revenues, so budget surplus, free cash. We don't roll that into the operating budget and inflate our, our, our budgets. That would create a structural deficit. So we use one-time revenues to pay for one-time things, like police cruisers, and you're going to hear from the chief in a moment. So the, the point that I want to make is that this, all these articles are linked to a long-term, a six-year plan that gets updated every year by the Financial Planning Committee. Every one of these projects has the unanimous support of the Appropriations Committee and the Financial Planning Committee. Articles eleven through sixteen are funded entirely with free cash. There is no additional tax impact. These are routine equipment replacements that we make every year. Because we make these investments on a regular basis, we can do things like what happened last year, the pandemic hits. We can postpone those things for one year, give ourselves some extra liquidity to deal with some, whatever happens, any kind of unknown. We're past that, thankfully, already. So now we're back to investing in our capital. But eleven, Articles eleven through sixteen, you can approve these with, there's no additional tax impact. Articles seventeen, eighteen, nineteen are water and sewer. You heard the presentation on Article Five from the DPW Director. Those projects are worked into the rate structure that he already talked about. So, so again, there will be no dramatic impact to the rate structure of water and sewer for those projects. So I hope you support these, as all the boards and committees have. These are important projects, they're the regular investment, again, in our equipment, our buildings, and our infrastructure. That's why we're able to, in a pandemic or an emergency, know that on a temporary basis, for a year or two, if we had to, we can delay some of these things, because we know exactly where we stand with our equipment and our buildings, and again, we're making regular investments. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now Article Eleven, Police Cruiser Replacements.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for the use of the police department, for the purchase of three new police vehicles, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Chief Liver.
This is our annual equipment upgrades for our police cruisers. We are, replace cruisers on a two-year cycle with two cars one year, three cars the next. And that keeps our cruisers at a relatively low mileage. We schedule them at four years or a hundred thousand miles. It keeps our maintenance costs down, it maximizes our trade-in values that, again, benefits the department as far as reducing the value and the cost of our, our vehicles. It's a three-car year, and that is what we're looking to purchase. That is, that is a complete upgrade of the cruisers as well. All the equipment, radios, blue lights transferred over from the older cruisers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or debate on Article Eleven? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on, and it's outlined on page six of your booklet. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for the use of the police department, for the purchase of three new police vehicles, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of one hundred fifty thou, fifty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, Article Eleven passes. Article Twelve, Fire Car Pickup Truck Replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to the town to vote to approve the sum of eighty thousand dollars for the use of the fire department, for the purchase of a new one-ton, four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup truck, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of eighty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Chief Parenti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This request seeks to replace a twenty-twelve one-ton, four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup truck. This vehicle's are used to carry personnel, equipment. It conducts emergency response, inspections, investigations. It's also our primary tow vehicle. It's part of our, our regular CIP, our Capital Improvement Program, and it's been in the program for over six years, and it currently has sixty-five thousand miles on it.
Thank you. Any questions, any debate on Article Twelve? Not hearing any. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Twelve, let me read the motion quickly first. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighty thousand dollars for the use of the fire department for the the fire department, for the purchase of a one-ton, four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup truck, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of eighty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash. Now, all those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article twelve passes. Article thirteen.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of seventy-six thousand dollars for the use of the fire department, for the purchase of a new command vehicle, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of seventy-six thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
The motion has been made and seconded. Chief Parenti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This will replace our 2015 Chevy Tahoe, which will be repurposed for our second-to-do command vehicle. Our command vehicle is a critical component of our incident response. It has all of our research material on it, communications, it's got several radios, chargers, all kinds of additional special stuff on it. It also responds with District fourteen, which is our fire district, and assist with incidents throughout our fire district. It will eventually replace our current car four, which has ninety-eight thousand miles on it.
Any questions or debate on Article thirteen? Hearing none? This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of seventy-six thousand dollars for the use of the fire department, for the purchase of a new command vehicle, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of seventy-six thousand dollars be transferred from free cash. This is also a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article thirteen passes. Article fourteen. DPW of Road Improvements and Maintenance.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred ten thousand dollars for road improvement and maintenance, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of three hundred ten thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sharpen, dear.
Mr. Moderator. This article requests funding for another year of our roadway pavement management program. Our current roadway funding is eight hundred thousand dollars, which includes five hundred thousand dollars from the state chapter ninety funds, and three hundred thousand dollars within our operating budget. Approval of this article will provide the final three hundred and ten thousand dollars needed to fund the work required to maintain our current roadway conditions. In 2020, our pavement management studies showed that past support has allowed the department to maintain the town's roadway service ratings, and in 2020, it remained relatively level at seventy-three point five. We balanced the work of roadway maintenance with that of drainage, culverts, and sidewalks in an effort to keep our transportation infrastructure sound and operational for the community. If you happen to answer any questions, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Article thirteen? Any debate on Article thirteen? I'm sorry, Article fourteen, my mistake. Article fourteen is detailed on pages seven and eight of your booklet. Not hearing any questions or debate? This is what we're voting on for Article fourteen. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred ten thousand dollars for road improvements and maintenance, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of three hundred ten thousand dollars be transferred from free cash. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article fourteen passes. Article fifteen. DPW one-ton dump truck with plow.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars for the use of the Department of Public Works, for the purchase of a one-ton dump truck with a plow, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. DPW Director.
Mr. Moderator. This request is to fund the replacement of a 2006 one-ton chassis truck. The useful life of these vehicles is between ten and twelve years. The new vehicle will be a similar chassis as the one being replaced, but with a dump body. The town has seven of these vehicles in operation, and we're on a cycle of replacing one every other year, therefore, at approximately fourteen-year replacement cycle. These trucks are the workhorses of the department and serve many purposes throughout the year, and as a part of the funding of this article, an older vehicle in the fleet will be repurposed.
Thank you. Any discussion, any debate on Article fifteen? Hearing none? This is what we're voting on, and Article fifteen is detailed on page eight of your booklet. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars for the use of the Department of Public Works to purchase, for the purchase of a one-ton dump truck with plow, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars be transferred from free cash. This also is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article fifteen passes. Article sixteen, please.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of seventy-four thousand dollars for the use of the Department of Public Works, for the purchase of a one-ton pickup with a tap plow, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of seventy-four thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
The motion has been made and seconded.
DPW Director here.
This request is to fund the replacement of a 2003 three-quarter-ton chassis truck. The useful life again of this vehicle is ten to twelve years. The new vehicle will be a standard one-ton F-350 chassis with plow. The town has five of these vehicles in service, and they serve a multitude of purposes, including parking lot snow removal, building and grounds maintenance. As part of the funding for this vehicle, an older vehicle in the fleet will be repurposed as a rapid-response vehicle.
Thank you. Any questions on Article sixteen? Any debate? Not hearing any? This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of seventy-four thousand dollars for the use of the Department of Public Works, for the purchase of a one-ton pickup truck with plow, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of seventy-four thousand dollars be transferred from free cash. Also a majority vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article seventeen passes, uh, sixteen passes? Article seventeen. DPW Water and Sewer Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for the funding Phase Two installation and implementation of the SCADA project for the DPW Water and Sewer Divisions, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow five hundred thousand dollars under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Select Board is authorized to take any other necessary action to carry out this project, and provided that the premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Phew, that was a tough one.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. DPW Director.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Well done. This request is to fund a supervisor control and data acquisition system. The term is SCADA, SCADA system, for the water and sewer divisions. The system allows staff to monitor and efficiently manage the town's utility infrastructure through a closed and secured network. Live remote monitoring provides the town residents a safe, reliable, and compliant system for their essential services and utilities. Currently, the water storage tanks, the MWA connection, and our sewer pump stations are not connected to a main point of contact or computer. Alarms that are received are all just general in nature and do not alert the on-call responder to what potential issue is creating the alarm, which can cause a delay in adequate and proper responses. The project consists of two phases. Phase one was completed in F, in calendar 2015, and phase two is proposed for FY22, which the, the phase two consists of the system installation and implementation. The cost for this article is divided between the water and sewer enterprise funds.
Are there any questions on Article seventeen? Any debate? Hearing none? This is what we're voting on, and I'll do the abbreviated version. The detailed version is on page nine of your booklet. I move the town appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for funding Phase Two installation and implementation of the SCADA project for the DPW Water and Sewer Divisions, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto that meet this appropriation, sewer, that meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow five hundred thousand dollars under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Select Board is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. And it makes reference to this is part of Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount of authorized to be allowed, be borrowed, to pay such costs in a, by a like amount. This requires a two-thirds vote. So I'm going to ask that we be very careful and hold up our cards so I can get a quick count. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare that Article seventeen has passed by two-thirds vote. Article eighteen. Water Reservoir Dam Compliance.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars for design and permitting to breach the reservoir dam, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow fifty thousand dollars under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Select Board is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project, and provided that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Motion has been made and seconded, and we have a presentation by Mr. DPW Director himself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
The Northborough Reservoir Dam is owned by the Northborough Water Department. It's located in the towns of Shrewsbury and Boylston. The structure is a significant hazard, poor-conditioned dam. The Office of Dam Safety has ordered Northborough to either bring the dam into compliance or to permanently, permanently breach it. This request is to fund the design and permitting needed to breach the dam, since it serves no functional purpose to its owner, the town. We've submitted a grant application to the state to fund seventy-five percent or one hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of the design and permitting. Therefore, this request of fifty thousand dollars is to fund the remaining twenty-five percent of the costs associated with design and permitting for the removal of this dam.
Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on Article eighteen? Yes. And may we have your name and address as well?
My name is Scott Goddard. I live at three twenty-seven Davis Street in Northborough. I'm also a land use professional and own a consulting firm in Northborough for ten years in the field of wetlands and environmental compliance. So generally, I am grateful for this Warren article and all the work that's gone into it, and I support the concept of dam removal as environmentally beneficial and to remove hazards. My question in this particular case, just thinking about the budget, knowing that two hundred thousand dollars would go to the design and permitting phase, the implementation phase would even be a much grander number to this. Seeing that it's not in our town, has there been, or I suppose there has been, I'm curious what the conversations have looked like with the towns of Boylston and Shrewsbury. Are they generally also in support of this, and would they be interested in assuming some level of responsibility if they, if they had different opinions about how it's handled? Or is that decision solely in the town of Northborough's court? Thank you.
Through the moderator. We have reached out to the towns of Boylston and Shrewsbury. We received a letter of support from the town of Boylston for removal of the dam. The town of Shrewsbury gave us a verbal support, we never received a letter. The vast majority of the dam and its empowerment is located in Boylston. The, the town of Northborough owns a substantial perimeter parcel around the dam. It was originally used as a water supply, so there is no residential access to it. We haven't received any indication from either community of a negative response for removal. We did do a limited dam removal feasibility study two years ago. It included portions of the sediment sampling and environmental considerations relevant to land underwater and downstream impacts. That report showed favorable results for dam removal, and that report has been shared with both the budding communities, and we received no, we haven't received any negative response from them.
Thank you. I'll be in support of the article.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other debate? Hearing none? We're talking Article eighteen, and that is detailed on pages nine and ten of your booklet. I will do an abbreviated version of the motion. The detailed version is in your booklet. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars for design and permitting to breach the reservoir dam, including the pay, the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow fifty thousand dollars under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to con, to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Select Board is authorized to make any other necessary, any other action necessary to carry out this project, and provided that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied by the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. This will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare that Article eighteen has, yeah, eighteen has passed by a two-thirds vote. Article nineteen. Water and Sewer Utility Tractor.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighty thousand dollars for the use of the DPW Water and Sewer Divisions, for the purchase of a utility tractor, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars be transferred from the Water Enterprise free cash, and the sum of forty-eight thousand dollars be transferred from the Sewer Enterprise free cash, for a total of eighty thousand dollars.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. DPW Director.
Thank you, Moderator. This request is to replace our 2003 utility tractor and trailer. The tractor is a multi-purpose piece of equipment that's used throughout the town. It primarily serves to clear the water and sewer cross-country easements in the summer months. It also assists with spring and fall cleanups, as well as clearing around the town hydrants during the winter months.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on Article nineteen? Hearing none? This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighty thousand dollars for the use of DPW Water and Sewer Divisions for the purchase of a utility tractor, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars be transferred from Water Free Enterprise cash and the sum of forty- sum of $32,000 be transferred from Water Free Enterprise cash, and the sum of $48,000 be transferred from Sewer Enterprise free cash, for a total of $80,000. This will require a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 19 passes. Article 20, Consolidated Personnel Bylaws. Rebecca Meekins, Assistant Town Administrator.
I'm not Rebecca Meekins. Motion, Article 20. I move the town vote to amend the consolidated personnel bylaw as shown in the appendix to the warrant entitled Article 20, Consolidated Personnel Bylaw Amendments, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, but with the Cable Access Director Position classified as Grade E instead of Grade D in Schedule A, Section 1-64-340.
Second. And now will the real Rebecca Meekins, please stand up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning. On March 25th, 2021, the Personnel Board voted to recommend the adoption of the general compensation scales in Section 1-64-350 Schedule B and Section 1-64-360 Schedule D. The Board also voted to recommend the creation of a new position entitled Data Collector in the Assessor's Office, as reflected in the appendix in the warrant. Subsequently, on April 21st, 2021, the Personnel Board met and voted to recommend the reclassification of the Cable Access Director Position as specified in the amended motion for Article 20 from a Grade D to a Grade E. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any discussion, debate on Article 20? Article 20, by the way, is detailed on pages 10 and 11 of your booklet. The motion we're voting on is, I move the town vote to amend the consolidated personnel bylaws as shown in the appendix to the warrant entitled Article 20, Consolidated Personnel Bylaw Amendments, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. A copy of such is, a copy of which is viewable on the town's website, and you can look at it there or in the back of your booklet.
Mr. Moderator, that was not the amended motion that was read. If you have that.
I did not pull that one up. I apologize. This is the amended emotion for, amended motion for Article 20. I move the town vote to amend the consolidated personnel bylaw as shown in the appendix to the warrant entitled Article 20, Consolidated Personnel Bylaw Amendments, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, but with the Cable Access Director Position classified as Grade E instead of Grade D in Schedule A, Section 164-340. Again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 20 has passed. Article 21, Storm Management and Land Disturbance Bylaw.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the code of the town of Northborough by adding a new Chapter 2-60 entitled Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance, as shown in the appendix to the warrant entitled Article 21, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Bylaw, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, a copy of which is viewable on the town's website at www.town.northborough.m-a.us, and vote pursuant to Section 58 of Chapter 40 of the General Laws to establish and adopt a municipal charges lien for costs incurred by the town to abate a violation of the bylaw or perform remediation work as authorized in Section 2-60-110 of the bylaw.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Litchfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town of Northborough has been complying with the EPA's federal stormwater permit since 2003. An updated permit went into effect in 2018 and includes more requirements to reduce pollutants from construction sites and large development and redevelopment projects. The town currently meets all the regulations of these requirements by multiple bylaws and various boards and committees through the permitting process of different boards. The proposed Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Bylaw in Article 21 seeks to streamline the existing permitting process and make it more transparent for developers and more in line with the EPA's expectations. While this will be a new, separate permit, most projects requiring a stormwater management permit will already need a wetlands notice of intent under the Conservation Commission, and the permit review process will be concurrent with similar projects and similar requirements. The proposed general bylaw will be implemented by the Conservation Commission for new and redevelopment projects within, with a disturbance of one or more acres, regardless of their proximity to the wetland resource areas. The Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Bylaw provides reasonable control of stormwater runoff quantity and quality to protect local water resources from degradation, as well as to protect Northborough's infrastructure, public health, safety, and private property. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Good morning to all the officials of Northborough. I'm here to ask questions about the stormwater management request to be, to, you dump in the water into the areas that are creating wetlands, and they're not taken care of properly. When a, our storm drain has to be put into place, we don't bring them directly to the source to dump them. In other words, the drain is put in and ended. The water has to then go all the way to wherever it can replenish itself or move down the brooks or whatever. It's not being absorbed by the grounds, creating these wetlands. Now, my question is, if you go put in any more storm drains, how are we going to maintain them? Are we going to run those directly into the brooks and rivers and streams or lakes? Or are we just going to end them at the end of the property and go no further? We need to get these things straightened out because all I see now is that the wetlands are growing and creating problems because they bring in the beavers. The beavers create dams and make more wetlands. So my suggestion is that we go back and re-study the storm drains and put them all the way into a brook, a lake, or a stream, so that they can forward down and not create the Sorry, I don't think I gave my name. It's John Fouracre, 99 Pleasant Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fouracre. This bylaw is intended to control runoff from sites larger than an acre for new and redevelopment projects. One of the goals of the bylaw is to promote infiltration back into the ground wherever possible, and then use stormwater management to control the amount of water that runs off. Ultimately, will end up in the wetlands, but hopefully at the design will be met to meet the existing volume and quantity in those areas.
That's fine. Hello? That's fine. I don't have a problem with that, but the problem that I do have is that you are creating more wetlands, whether it's an acre or two acres or whatever. All your road drains are going into those areas that are now creating more wetlands. And I feel that the storm drains should be put into, if you're putting a storm drain on Hudson Street, you end it. It doesn't go any further than the side of the road. I'm suggesting that we take those storm drains and move them to the river because they're not getting to the source where they need to be removed from. When you create the wetlands, the ground is not absorbing the water, and we need to do that. If we put in a road and we put the storm drain in and it only goes 50 feet and the brook is 500 feet away, you've now created a wetland source between the 50 and the 500. That's an awful big piece of property. If your storm drain is on a piece of property of an acre or less or more or whatever, it's still going to do the same thing. My suggestion is to get the water to the source that's going to remove it the best. And when you create the wetlands, they're not absorbing because the ground now becomes filled with debris from the trees or whatever, and it doesn't allow the water to drain out. My best example to give you is Cold Harbor Brook between Crawford, Pleasant, I mean, Church, and Route 20 or West Main Street. This area has done nothing but grow and grow and grow, and I saw them doing some repair work up there, and all they did was dig a hole, put a bunch of rocks in it, and walk away from it. Now what's happening is the water is just staying there. It creates another source. Wetlands are one of the worst things we can have for, wetlands are one of the worst things that we can have because they create mosquitoes. We are trying to keep a mosquito-controlled place in business. We might as well turn the town into wetlands, and they'll be happy as can be. Thank you.
Again, the bylaw is intended to control construction site runoff from projects of an acre or larger. I believe what you're talking about is a lot of roadside drainage. This bylaw is intended to control development, drainage, and improve the drainage calculations and the quantity that goes back into the ground.
I understand that. I totally, totally understand that. But you're just running it off the property. You're not putting it anywhere. If I've got a piece of property that's the size of this field, and I have to put in a, I have to put in a runoff, that runoff is going out into the streets, where it's going to go into the storm drains, where the storm drains go into the swamps and create more swamps. That's the point I'm getting at.
Do you want to respond to that or not? There's been a motion to move, to vote. Seconded. All in favor? Those opposed? Okay, now we are voting on Article 21. The details of Article 21 are on page 11 for you, if you have the manual or the booklet. Here's what we're voting on. I move the town vote to amend the code of the town of Northborough by adding a new Chapter 2-60 entitled Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance, as shown in the appendix of this warrant entitled Article 21, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Bylaw, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, a copy of which is viewable on the town's website, and pursuant to Section 58 of Chapter 40 of the General Laws to establish and adopt municipal charges lien for costs incurred by the town to abate a violation of the bylaw or perform remediation work as authorized in Section 2-60-110 of the bylaw. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 21 passes. Article 22, Northborough Wetlands Bylaw. Leslie Bruton.
Article 22. I move the town vote to amend the town of Northborough Wetlands Bylaw, Section 6-04-060 Notice. Hearings by adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do we have a presentation? Yes.
My name is Kelly Marston. I am a member of the Conservation Commission and a resident from Pleasant Street. The Conservation Commission is requesting to change their bylaw to allow the use of certificates of mail at a cost of approximately $1 per article of mail and still meet all state and local requirements for better notification. In addition to being more convenient, this change will reduce the financial burden on applicants, especially homeowners, by removing the requirement to use certified mail in return receipt, which currently costs about $7 per article of mail.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any debate on Article 22?
Over here.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Mitch Cohen. I live at 12 Whitney Street. I have a question. When, I've received similar notifications before. They're important. They're important for you to understand what's going on in your neighborhood and decide whether you should attend to participate in a public hearing being held. When these come certified, it's a big green flag that says, this is important, and we'll read it and decide what to do. My question is, under this bylaw, if approved, these will no longer come certified, and I know these usually come, sometimes they're from a homeowner, but usually they're from a developer or engineer or architect. When people, and I suspect this is true of many of the people on this field, when a letter comes, an envelope comes from a business you don't know, and it's not marked in some way that makes it obvious that you really need to read this thing, it might get filed as junk mail, and my worry is people might miss the importance of something going on in their neighborhood that they should be aware of and might want to participate in a public hearing. I didn't see anything in the bylaws. My question is, is there anything required to be present on the envelope to make it clear that this relates to a public hearing of an abutting property? Or is, will it look like any other piece of mail that you might get?
I'm not sure what the actual envelope would look like. Mia McDonald, our conservation agent, has more experience in this.
Hi, Mia McDonald, your conservation agent, staff for the Conservation Commission. It will have additional postage, but no additional notification that this is from the town or anything like that.
Then I have concerns about approving this as is. I appreciate that we should simplify and lower the cost of going through this application process, but I think it's critical for abutters to understand what's going on in abutting properties, so I do not think this should be approved as is. If there's a way in the future to rework this, to require some obvious way of making clear, other than just additional postage, because it has a little bit more paper in there, I appreciate the effort and the idea, but I don't think this is appropriate right now. Thank you.
Over here, please.
Hi, Kristen Wickstead, 2 Stirrup Lane. I agree with the previous speaker that, this is, there's a, there's an echo. I think there's enough problems with abutters getting notice early enough that they can participate in open meetings or public hearings or whatever. We've had it in the Bartlett Street neighborhood. The woman who lives on the corner of Lyman Street and Bartlett Street is a direct abutter of a property that's going in. of a property that's going in and she's, or being developed, and she's had a hard time. She's expressed a lot of frustration with the fact that the abutters' notices don't come very early and whatever the rules are. She's already frustrated with it. We're frustrated with it on her behalf. And I understand in a neighborhood, when it's one of the neighbors sending the notices, an extra expense is not convenient and it's probably really frustrating, but coming from a neighborhood where there's a lot of development happening, it's really frustrating when people feel like they're not getting notified. So there's definitely two sides to this. Thank you.
That's completely understanding. I've been on that side of the coin before. I think what we were hoping with this, by bringing it from $7 down to $1 per mailing, that it would be a little more convenient or people would do it sooner and be less of a burden to the homeowner, because there are some homeowners that don't just have three or four abutters that they have to notify. It's, you know, it's upwards of 20 and 30. So we're hoping it would just be a more convenient cost for the homeowner and that would be done more efficiently. But I do agree, there has to be something on the front of it that makes it look important.
Yeah, or maybe could, I don't know if there's any way to amend this, to say that a large developer with a certain amount of property that they're developing, they would have a different process than a homeowner. I don't know.
Over here, please.
Hi, this is Carter Brandon, 22 Sherlin Drive. I was just asking, do some of the, like, commas in the thing, I don't know if this has any, would change, it has any effect on like the legal meaning or what, anything like that is, I'm just kind of, there's no, it seems like there should be a comma between hand delivery and the amendment. I don't know if that changes the meaning of it. It's, I think it's like an Oxford comma thing, but I was just asking if that's a typo or if that has no relevance to the legal meaning of the bylaw.
Mr. Moderator?
I will be honest, that is not my strength. But I can ask who reviewed it.
I can answer that.
Yes, town council, please.
There's no legal impact by the presence or non-presence of the Oxford comma in this instance, in my view.
Okay, thank you. And over here, please.
Good morning. Sorry. Laura Folsom, 4 Laurel Avenue in Northborough. I pay approximately $13,000 worth of tax to this town every year. I respectfully request that you continue to send certified mail to people in our town who are abutters and need to be notified. At this point in time, I am struggling as a parent of three young drivers to keep my children safe when we have approximately 418-wheeler trucks zipping back and forth outside this high school driveway. I did not know that this was going to happen because I did not receive a certified letter. I respectfully request you use some of my $13,000 that I earn as a public school teacher in our district and use that money to send certified letters so that we, the people in Northborough, might be better informed about these decisions that affect our community and our families. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I was just talking to the conservation agent. Just out of clarification, the planning board and the zoning board just use regular mail. The Conservation Commission is the only board in town that uses certified mail. And out of the 351 towns and cities in Massachusetts, we're the only town that still requires certified mail. So we're trying to mainstream it with the rest of the boards and committees and towns and towns and cities in the state.
Thank you. Any other questions, any other debate on Article 22? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to amend, no, that's not it. I move the town vote to amend the town of Northborough Wetlands Bylaw, Section 6-04-060. Notice hearings by adding the text shown as underlined and set forth in the warrant. And this is included in the back part of your booklet, if you'd like to see the details. This will require a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed? Article 22 does not pass. Article 23. Community Preservation Fund, pickleball courts at Ellsworth McAfee Park. Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $290,250 from the Community Preservation Fund revenues to the Northborough Department of Public Works and the Northborough Parks and Recreation Department for the construction of six outdoor pickleball courts at Ellsworth McAfee Park.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Campbell, if you will.
Good morning. I'm John Campbell from the Community Preservation Committee. I brought a couple of props with me today. Show of hands, who has played pickleball before? Show of hands, who would like to play pickleball? I confess, I have never played pickleball. It looks like a lot of fun. I was once a pretty good tennis player, emphasis on the "was," and so I think this might be more in my wheelhouse going forward. I am fascinated how popular it's become. I've got another prop here. I was cleaning out the garage, and I found this sign. And this was one of the campaign signs that were put out in 2004 for the town election, at which 65% of Northborough voted to approve the Community Preservation Act. And the message was clear: Get state matching funds. And in 15 years of getting state matching funds, the town of Northborough has got over 2.5 million from the state to enhance our investment in preserving the community in all the different ways that the CPA does that for us. And that allows us to do fun things like this, to put in new recreational facilities. This installation is consistent with what the master plan says we want and consistent with what town people said during the Open Space and Rec survey of 2020. The need for pickleball was probably the number-one thing that was brought forth. The plan is good. There is a picture of it in the handout, if you got it, and available on the town website. This would put six courts along the roadside at the beginning of Ellsworth McAfee Park. It would not impact any of the existing other soccer fields and facilities. Parking is maintained, so really looks like a good idea and a good place for it, and it's obviously very popular. So I hope you'll support the measure.
Thank you. Any questions or debate on Article 23? Yes, please.
Hello. My name is Marcia Hill from Weston Terrace. My concern, I'm neither for or opposed, but what are we losing? Because the proposal is to add these pickleball courts, and I've been there on weekends and parking is the crunch or, you know, there are a lot of fields, there are not enough fields for all the uses. So I would have liked more time to, or more notification so I could see what the land use is and was there something other than pickleball courts we wanted to add? That's just a concern I have.
Could I ask, is your concern that the location could have been used for something else?
Yes, why that sport necessarily? Or are we losing parking if it's on the front side? Because there is usually a crunch as far as use. If you have kids there, you know, many of us parents could tell you like how hard it is to get fields scheduled at times or find parking.
It's not a location that would support another sport field, for instance, soccer. It does not impact the existing parking. Granted, if there's more use at Ellsworth McAfee, there'd be more people coming, I understand. But otherwise, it's not taking away from any other use at the park, if that was your concern.
I would have liked to have more input or have folks decide whether it should be pickleball versus maybe actual tennis courts, volleyball. I didn't see anything like that go out. And that's just my concern, why I'm not ready to support or not support it. Thanks.
Sure, I understand. As I mentioned, and it was a difficult year to conduct surveys and have hearings, I fully understand, but we did have a reach out to the community for what was important with regard to open space and recreation. And as I mentioned, the desire for courts that would support this popular sport was among the number-one items.
Yes, please, over here.
Hi, Dave McConaughey, 161 Hudson Street. I played pickleball in high school, so I can speak from experience that this is not everyone's game. My concern is to ask about the multipurpose-ness of the court that might be designed. Can it be used for tennis? Can it be used for volleyball, for badminton, for basketball? I think it would be not in our community's best interest to have a single-purpose court whose only design is for pickleball, a sport that has no professional organization and no groundswell support and is not much of a spectator sport. So while many folks might use it recreationally, I think designing and approving the budget, which is a lot of money for a single-use court, would be inadvisable. Can you comment on the design of the actual floor plan and whether or not other sports will be welcome or permitted in this space?
Sure.
Scott Chapantier, TPW Director. So the facility at Ellsworth has volleyball there currently?
Only sand.
Yeah, correct. Only sand. And there are tennis courts available at Melican. The design is conceptual. It's easy to incorporate tennis into a pickleball court configuration. That's not a challenge for the dual use. We have not thought about nor considered basketball as one of the uses. There are adequate basketball courts at Ellsworth.
I would debate that, citing their rapid use and also the way in which they have been maintained, which is not ideal.
Well, there hasn't been consideration for basketball use in the pickleball court.
Right. So when we have an item on the agenda that's going to cost nearly $300,000, we did not think to promote it in the broadest use and language possible. It seems off-putting to me, right? We want everyone to be able to enjoy this particular sports field. Why not pitch it to a larger sports audience?
There was identified a need for pickleball courts for pickleball sport. We didn't see any need come out of the recreation study that said we needed more basketball courts. This is the first I've heard that there's inadequate basketball space that we have.
Is this related to the change proposed in the long term of City Hall leaving the City Hall building where the pickleball things are currently done in the basement inside?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not. Over here, please.
Hello. John Wraith, 3 Laurel Ave. I think pickleball sounds pretty cool, but I just have a basic question. Where is it exactly going to be on, where are you going to put it, in as of it?
The location is Abutting 135, just to the left of the first entrance, if you were coming south.
So with that structure, with the picnic tables?
Just to the roadside of it.
Seems like a good spot. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. And to the previous speaker, the only, your objections are valid if you're looking for places to play, but I'd object to your use of the word "no groundswell support." I can't tell you how many people have been talking about pickleball, you know, the least suspecting people. Just yesterday, I'm getting a text from somebody about what is pickleball, and it wasn't because they knew I was going to talk about it. So it seems very popular, and I think it covers many age groups, you know, and serves the community well because not all of us can play basketball very well anymore. And as I said, I think I'm a lousy tennis player now, so this might be good for anybody my age and older, of which there are a lot more of us.
Over here, please.
Ed Bombard, 28 Crawford Street. My question is, how will you schedule the use of the pickleball courts? I know the town of Westboro just put in about six courts over there, and they have a big sign that the pickleball courts are for Westboro residents only, which is clearly not working because I have members of my family who play pickleball, and they travel all over Marlborough, Westboro, Lummester, and they have free use of all of the other courts. So will we have a signup period where people will sign up for certain hours to use the court?
I would imagine some kind of signup sheet could be developed, and much like the use of any other facility, use the tennis courts as an analogy. Typically, you make time accordingly to go down or wait if the court is in use, and I think with this plan for six courts, rather than just planning one, it, you know, it serves the purpose of accommodating many games at once.
Over here.
Hi, Mitch Cohen, 12 Whitney Street. I think this is a pretty cool idea. I've been reading about this, following this through the CPA process, and I had no idea what pickleball was. As it turned out, last week, I watched some people play pickleball, and it looked really cool. So I'm looking forward to trying it. My, a couple of questions. One, again, being new to the sport, because this is adjacent to a main road, is there any risk of the ball going flying into the road by this? I don't know how far these balls travel or anything like that. That'd be one question. Two, as was brought up before, I think it's a...
I don't think they go very far, you know? I doubt you're going to, you know, not like a tennis ball. If it were me, it would be going out of the court.
So that's the next half of this, is I love the idea of doubling up and having a multiple people per space. And the pickleball courts that I saw were tennis courts that had recently been converted into using for both, which I think is a really good idea, to have more things available at Ellsworth McAfee and not have to go to a middle school, which is often used by the middle school, just to play tennis. And being, again, being adjacent to 135, I think it could be done, whether it be higher fencing or something like that, so I support this. I encourage you to really think about the use of tennis as well as pickleball, just in case pickleball turns out to be a fad that goes away. We can easily use it for anything else, or for people who still like tennis, they could play tennis. Thanks.
Over here, please.
Thank you. Fran Backstrom, 76 Cedar Hill Road. I just have to say, wow. I mean, this is something that is the number-one growing sport in the older adult community. It is popular because of the age... It is popular because of the aging baby boomers and their desire to stay active with less physical ability than they had when they played basketball or tennis. And the idea that we're trying to make it into a, anything other than that, is just a disservice to the older adults who are looking for that type of activity. The other thing is parking will be an issue if the, I should say, during the times when soccer is on the fields. But otherwise, again, if the majority of people who are playing it are retired or part-time people of an older, an older population, it'll be during different times. And I would ask everyone to seriously consider supporting this article.
Over here, please.
Marianna Bohemi, 75 Little Pond Road. I'm just curious about the environmental impacts of this. I'm seeing that there's going to be a removal of trees. I'm curious about that.
So the pickleball courts will be placed in a currently grass-surfaced area. There are provisions in the estimate for stormwater management associated with that and recharge. The existing groundwater recharge will be mimicked during the proposed conditions. Any vegetation that's removed will be replaced and the anticipation is to keep the tree vegetation along the rear abutting residential parcel as well as vegetation along the Route 135 frontage. Yes, please.
My name is Bob Savage, 49 Sherwin Drive Northborough. I've been playing pickleball for the last five years since I retired. I used to play a lot of racquetball, but now I play pickleball because they put a net in front of it. But tennis players and ping pong players are very good at playing pickleball. And it's a growing national sport. Supposedly, it started in Seattle, Washington. And the dog, they play with a wiffle ball and people are concerned about balls flying. It's a wiffle ball. Outdoor ball has forty holes in it, different sizes, and indoor ball has twenty-six holes. So there is a difference in the balls. They are wiffle ball, they're plastic, you play with a paddle. And when the game was devised in Seattle, supposedly Pickles was the dog who used to chase the ball.
Over here, please.
Hi, Apple, 59 School Street. So I just wanted to clarify for the record, so will there be tree removal, yes or no?
There'll be shrub removal, not trees. So there's vegetated, there's flowering fruit trees along the residential property to the north side, and then there's a shrub line along the Route 135 section. Those shrubs, our intention is to remain, and there are shrubs that are along the entranceway. The shrubs on the entranceway will be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Anderson, 260 Green Street. The comment was made earlier that, you know, perhaps we should look at something that, you know, for additional uses. I think it's important, you know, when you talk about basketball, I believe every school in our community has outdoor basketball courts that people can use. We have little league fields, we have ball fields, we have football fields. We have parks for younger kids at 135. When you look at Ellsworth McAfee, you have soccer fields, you have sledding areas, you have multi-use fields, you have a basketball court, there were bocce courts, there's a skateboard park. I think it's safe to say that, you know, there has been a concerted effort to have multiple uses at our facilities in town. I think having something that is geared perhaps to an older generation is only fair. We have nothing like that in town now, and I would urge people to support this. Thank you.
Did I hear a motion to move the question?
Yes.
And I heard a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, we are voting on Article 23. I never knew what I didn't know about pickleball. The motion is, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $290,000, $290,250 to the Community Preservation Fund revenues, or from the Community Fund revenues, to the Northborough Department of Public Works and the Northborough Parks and Recreation Department for the construction of six outdoor pickleball courts at Ellsworth McAfee Park. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed? Article 23 passes, pickleball comes to Northborough. Article 24.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve Fund to the Northborough Historical Society for painting and cleaning of the exterior of the building located at 52 Main Street.
The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I confess, it's been many years since I've gone in the Historical Society building, but the times that I did, it's fascinating. If you've never been, take the time, next time it's open, hopefully soon, and look through it. It's a great asset in town, very visible, and it is in some disrepair. So this is an allowable use under the CPA for restoration of an historic asset and a very reasonable request by the Historic Society. So I ask your support of this measure.
Any questions? Any debate on Article 24? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve Fund to the Northborough Historic Society for painting and cleaning of the exterior of the building located at 52 Main Street. A majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 24 passes. Article 25, Community Preservation Fund Conservation Fund. Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $400,000 from the Community Preservation Unreserved Fund and transfer said amount to the Community Conservation Fund, excuse me, Conservation Fund for future open space preservation or acquisitions.
The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. The Conservation Fund in town can be used for acquisition of open space, conservation restrictions on open space, or support maintenance of our existing open areas and recreation areas in town. We have, at many previous town meetings, approved the transfer of money into the Conservation Fund from the CPA funds, and by doing that, we allow for more prompt use of the monies when a land opportunity becomes available, rather than bringing each opportunity back to town meeting. It's important to note that when the money is transferred to the Conservation Fund, it can only be used for uses that qualify under the CPA, such as the things I just mentioned. Historically in town, we've been very successful at preserving open land and creating more recreation space and so on, which was one of the original reasons why the CPA was approved by residents back in 2004, thus to my sign. And many examples in town that you see came from the use of the Conservation Fund in addition to other CPA funds, such as the Green Street land formerly of the Shunder property, the Rostrom land abutting it, Silver Property and other abutting properties on Mount Pisgah, and maintenance at Bartlett Pond from last year's town meeting and so on. So it's a very effective use. Our goal had always been to try to keep the Conservation Fund with a substantial balance, approaching 1 million if we could, for any important land acquisition that might come along. We recently acquired, the town recently acquired a large parcel on Howard Street, keeping it from development, again, abutting other conservation land. And that depleted the fund below 300,000 now, I believe, as far as CPA money in it. So this would bring it up to a more sizable balance that will put us in position for future opportunities that we see in the very near future to preserve more land.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any debate on Article 25? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $400,000 from the Community Preservation Unreserved Fund and transfer said amount to the Conservation Fund for future open space preservation or acquisition. This is a majority vote as well. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 25 passes. Article 26, Community Preservation Fund Affordable Housing Reserve. Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $65,200 from the Community Preservation Fund revenues and place said amount in the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Fund.
The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. Just a little background on CPA, make sure everybody understands. Each year, from the amount of revenue that we expect, we must commit at least 10% to each of the three core categories, that being affordable housing, historic preservation, and open space and recreation. So this article will satisfy the minimum 10%. There is no current project for which it would go, that's why we're putting it in the reserve account of CPA. However, we expect that it will support in the future more affordable housing projects like have come to pass with the help of the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation and their partnerships that they've developed with Habitat for Humanity and others. The most recent project being the conversion of the two historic buildings next to the Trinity Church that are now four really nice-looking affordable apartments in those buildings. And again, I commend the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation and the volunteers in it for their time. This is a great cause in town and I ask your support for more affordable housing.
Thank you. Any questions or debate on Article 26? Hearing none, this is a majority vote as well. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $65,200 from the Community Preservation Fund revenues and place said amount in the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. A majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 26 passes. Article 27, Community Preservation Fund White Cliffs Debt Service.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $203,780 from the Community Preservation Fund revenues to the Northborough Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2022 debt service and expenses associated with the acquisition of the property at 167 Main Street.
The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Moderator, this is, and citizens, this is the fourth bond payment on the commitment of the town to preserve White Cliffs at the 2016 town meeting, I believe. And just a brief update, many of the critical repairs to keep the building in good shape, particularly the roof, have been accomplished. A major architectural and reuse study has been completed. It's really interesting, I just started digging through it myself. It was posted on the town website in December. I would encourage you to seek it out. And the reuse committee in town continues to look for the opportunities that we'll have with this great property. Again, this is for the next bond payment as a commitment from the 2016 town meeting vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any debate on Article 27? Not hearing any. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $203,780 from the Community Preservation Fund revenues to the Northborough Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2022 debt service and expenses associated with the acquisition of the property at 167 Main Street. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 27 passes. Article 28, Community Preservation Fund CPA Administration. Mr. Campbell.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $32,600 from the Community Preservation Fund revenues to the Northborough Community Preservation Committee for expenses associated with the implementation of the Community Preservation Act, including but not limited to clerical assistance, office supplies, property surveys, appraisals, attorney's fees, and other professional services, recording fees, printing, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the fiscal year 2022.
The motion has been made and seconded.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
So this is really some housekeeping. Every year, the legisla, the law allows for up to 5% of the incoming CPA revenue to be used for expenses. We, as a committee, generally ask for the full 5% to be approved in the event that is needed. For the most part, this handles things like appraisals for property that we're thinking of acquiring, such as with the open space and conservation fund provisions I mentioned earlier. But anything that's unused in a given fiscal year goes back into the unreserved account of the CPA, so it accumulates as part of our reserves, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any debate on Article 28? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $32,600 from the Community Preservation Fund revenues to Northborough Community Preservation Committee for expenses associated with the implementation of the Community Preservation Act, including but not limited to clerical assistance, office supplies, property surveys, appraisals, attorney's fees, and other professional services, recording fees, printing, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the fiscal year of 2022. Again, a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 28 passes.
Thank you all for your support of CPA in Northborough.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Article 29, Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-03-080(c) enforcement penalty for violation. Don't leave your pickleball behind.
Good morning. I have good news, I'm not actually going to ask you guys for any money, unless you're on the receiving end of a penalty, which I have no say in. Mr. Moderator, I move the town of Northborough vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough Zoning Bylaw, Section 703080(c) enforcement, penalty for violation by adding the text shown as underlined and set forth in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded.
The purpose of this article is a revision to existing zoning bylaw, Section 703080(c), pertaining to the enforcement of the zoning bylaw and applying a penalty for the violation. This article was brought forth by the zoning enforcement officer in collaboration with town council. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 21D, provides for noncriminal disposition of violations of a bylaw rule or regulation if the bylaw rule or regulation provides for a specific penalty amount for violations. The current language in the zoning bylaw does not include a specific penalty amount. It sets a not-to-exceed amount of $300, which is the maximum allowed by law. Town council has advised that the existing language needs to be revised to include a specific penalty amount for the town to be able to use the noncriminal method to enforce the zoning bylaw. The new language is a common form of noncriminal disposition authority with increasing penalty amounts for each additional violation. Without the ability, without the availability of the noncriminal method, enforcement and collection of penalties under the zoning bylaw would require a criminal complaint in the district court as directed by the general laws. complaint in the district court as directed by the general laws. A goal of the noncriminal method is to encourage compliance while allowing for a simpler administrative process.
Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on Article 29? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-03-080C, enforcement, penalty for violation by adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant booklet. This will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, I declare that Article 29 has passed by the required two-thirds vote. Article 30, Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-05-010, general provisions.
Hi.
Ms. Porteski.
Hi, thanks. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough Zoning Bylaw, Section 705010G, by adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant, but with modifications to clauses 4A, 4D, and 4M as shown in bold in the warrant supplement distributed at this town meeting.
Motion has been made and seconded. Your presentation, please.
Sure. The purpose of this addition, it's in addition to the existing zoning bylaw, Section 705010G, pertaining to prohibited uses. The proposed prohibited use letters A through M in the warrant relate to uses posing a present or potential hazard to human health, safety, welfare, or the environment. Use N on the list is not a new prohibited use, it was already prohibited, so he added it to the list to include it in the same section. We have also proposed language which prohibits an applicant applying for a use variance for any of these prohibited uses. We had a public hearing in April, a few modifications were made due to input we received as part of the public hearing. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on Article 30? Please.
Mr. Moderator, John Wickstead, Two Sterber Lane. I move to amend Article 30 with the addition of line O as follows. Line O, warehouse space exceeding a total of 15,000 square feet on the lot. Mr. Moderator, this was seconded.
Do you have a copy of that so that I can give town council a chance to take a peek I wanted to go over what was going on, just to make sure we were within the scope of the original article. And in my opinion, as well as the opinion of the town council, this is outside the scope of the original article.
The original article addresses prohibited uses in Northborough, this is a prohibited use. I'm not sure why this would be outside the scope of that. The prohibited uses here that are listed in A through N are all uses which are bad for Northborough. Gypsum plants, smelting, lumber mills, these are all uses which don't contribute to our community. Warehouses in excess of 15,000 feet would clearly fall under uses which are not good for our community. If we have small businesses in town, coffee roasters or auto park plants that need a certain amount of storage to make their small business viable, 15,000 square feet is certainly a large amount of space, that's a third of an acre. These 100,000-plus square foot warehouses that we're seeing in Northborough are certainly not contributing to our community. They've been bad for Bartlett Street, but in a larger sense, they're bad for Northborough. They're bad for Hudson Street. They're bad for Brigham Street. They're bad for Church Street. They're bad for South Street, they're not good for Northborough. And this is a use which falls under the prohibited uses in the same way that these other uses that are covered under this bylaw are also not good for Northborough.
I understand what you're saying, but in my opinion, and I've got the support of town council, that would warrant having another article, and it's outside the scope of this original article. And I hear your argument, but I've expressed my opinion as well.
You have some rationalization for that?
Well, I just think that, you know, we're talking about different types of businesses, and then suddenly you're talking about the size of a facility. That's outside the scope of the types of businesses that we're talking about.
I mean, this is a different kind of business. If you've seen the type of businesses that are being put in on Bartlett Street, these are Amazon, FedEx, and AEW.
This is not a debate about that. You're talking about the size and the scope of a building, you're not talking about the nature of what takes place inside the building. And the other things, and the other topics that are already in this article--
Sure.
The other topics that are discussed here are the types, the business that takes place, or the nature of what the results are of that activity taking place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I know, but we have a point of order coming up here.
John Foraker, 99 Pleasant Street. I'm raising a point of order, Fred, because you had a motion seconded, and you haven't voted on it, whether it's, whether it's not part of whatever. I think that has to be attended to before we move forward.
Well, Mr. Foraker, may I say, the motion was made and seconded, and before I had an opportunity to ask for more details as to what was going on. As the moderator, it's my responsibility to make sure we take the necessary steps in the proper order. Therefore, your argument that says a motion was made and seconded is not really part of this discussion.
Should it not be voted on to whether it's going to be accepted?
If I have, if I have determined, and town council has determined, that it's outside the scope of the original article, then that's not something that the town meeting can then say, okay, we're going to go forward with it anyway. No.
Okay, I stand corrected, thank you.
Okay. Over here, please.
Hi, this is Carter Brandon, 22 Sherland Drive. I had a few questions about the article. The part that says raising and breeding of fur-bearing animals, what exactly is the scope of that? Is that just like minks or whatever, or is like sheep included in this? Or like, is this banning like any animal-based agriculture?
Thanks, Carter, that's actually a good question. We had a public hearing, and we talked about all these, and that was one that came up, the raising and breeding of fur-bearing animals. And we were gonna, there's something called fur farming, where they, they are raising animals just for their fur, so they're slaughtered for their fur. And we were, we discussed changing it to fur farming, the raising and breeding of fur-bearing animals for their fur. But upon discussion with the town planner and others, they said that raising and breeding of fur-bearing animals is a known in the industry, that that's for the slaughter of animals for their fur, and that we didn't have to go any further with it.
Okay, thank you. And just the other question is, there's a lot of uses that are being prohibited in one article, and I don't know if, I feel like, is there a way to consider some of these individually instead of voting on all of them at once? Because I think that there are some that are very different from each other that should not be disvoted on as a single article.
That would probably have the moderator--
Go ahead.
But we did have a public hearing where we went down each one of these, and I know everybody probably didn't know or didn't attend, but we included it when we wrote the bylaw. We took it from other towns, and they had the list of all these uses that were considered offensive to others and not beneficial to the town. So it was just put forth all in one bylaw. If somebody wanted to make an amendment and maybe take one off, maybe that's how it would go through with town meeting. I'm not sure what the moderator thinks.
Well, I think that I will, I will come back to the planning board and say, you had your meetings, you had amounted to public hearings--
Mm-hmm.
--to talk about that as far as what was going on. You also did the comparison throughout the Commonwealth as to what is typical in a municipality. So if someone feels strongly about it, I can't, I can't say they can't present a modification. But I think that the process itself had, had good consistency and rigidity as far as its ability to be compared to other communities like Northbrook.
I'm not criticizing the process at all, I'm just asking whether, because it is several changes happening at once, is there a way to sort of, like, could we vote on it line by line, or, or something like that?
I would not want to vote on it line by line. You can't, you know, an article is written as being an article where you establish where the guidelines, where the parameters, or as we call it, the four corners are. And, and if you start saying we're doing it line by line, then you're, you're really, you know, making a process that should have taken place during the planning period for town meeting, not necessarily at town meeting.
Okay.
So my preference is, is that, you know, vote it down if you're not in agreement with this, or vote, support it if you are in agreement with it. But let's not try to dissect it and put it back together again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Morning, Anthony Moffett, Six Weber Lane. I have a question, a clarification on Mr. Wickstead's request to add subsection O to this. Curious as to why a self-storage facility is defined independently and different than a facility that would be a warehouse of 15,000 square feet or larger. You're saying that, the town is saying that, well, you're getting into specifics. Isn't self-storage facility very specific and almost aligned with a 15,000-square-foot facility?
Ms. Porteski.
Self-storage facilities were prohibited in our town before this town meeting. That was something I just pulled out of the bylaw and added to this list because it was off in its own area, so I figured why not add it to the list with the others. I cannot compare self-storage facilities with warehouses. I think the warehouses are bigger. But I can't speak to the difference between the self-storage and the warehouse, they seem very similar.
Yeah, I mean, but that was your point of contention earlier, that this was a very targeted in request, and self-storage seems to be very targeted as well. So I'm a little confused as to why you can do the one, but you can't do the other, that's all. So I believe according to this, that Mr. Wickstead's request should actually be voted on.
Yep, that wasn't, that was up to the moderator and town council, not, not me.
Yes, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Manny Lopes, I'm on 96 Bartlett Street. I'm here to also follow up on what both of these two gentlemen just talked about relative to this requirement here. This prohibit, it talks about prohibited businesses that present a potential hazard to human health, safety, welfare, or environment through the emission of smoke, particulate matter, noise, vibration, or through fire explosive device or glare expressly prohibited. In addition, so it talks about all of these businesses. I don't know, when you look at an Amazon facility, how do you list their business and say it meets those requirements? But they do. They do because they have 200 trucks going up and down Bartlett Street that presenting a human health hazard to the residents, the people who walk up and down the Aqueduct or the street to enjoy the Aqueduct for walking dogs or whatever. We got a school right here at the intersection, and a middle school, or an elementary school just up the way. These trucks meet that requirement. Now, maybe 15,000, you can debate what it is, but any business that generates a need for 200 trucks to go through a residential and a school zone area meets the requirements of a hazard to human health, particulate matter, I'm just going to say it, diesel trucks generate a lot of particulate matter. So how are you going to pick up that generated environment around the building if you don't put a restriction on size? Thank you. I request that we reject this.
Fran Backstrand, 76 Cedar Hill Road. The warehouse issue is an issue, but this is for a use variance, not a business, not a size of a building, dimensional variance, it's a use variance. And to Ms. Porteski's point, self-storage facility is a use, and that's why it can be included in here. A general statement of warehouse of 15,000 square feet or less, just as a reminder for all of you who shop at Wegmans, that's 33,000 square foot. So 15,000 is not really a warehouse, it's more like a storage unit. So there is an issue about warehouses in the town, but every article should not have to address that issue. Thank you.
Over here.
Yeah, Jeffrey Amberson, 260 Green Street. I think people may be missing the point here. Fact is, warehouses weren't originally addressed in this warrant article. People have not had proper notice. People who are looking at this, who go online, they see this, there's no mention of warehouses. You know, that's why the warrant is put out there ahead of time. Coming in at the 11th hour and adding it does not give proper notice to everybody else in town. I think you should stick to what's here, what people have been notified about, and if people want to talk about warehouses, put another warrant article on, but give people proper notice.
Hey, John Ray, Three Laurel Ave. I think there's a lot of support here to put this on, and I'm frustrated as a resident, as a taxpaying resident, that it's being ignored. I think our select board has failed us, and I encourage you to reconsider.
Any other discussion, any other debate on Article 30?
Jason Perode, Board of Selectmen. I just want to point out, as has been pointed out, that the warrant is posted in advance so people have an understanding of what's going to be on there and what they're going to expect to come to town meeting to decide on. To try to expand the scope of an article by including something that wasn't on there, that wasn't notified to the public, for them to make a decision about whether they wanted to be here today or not in order to participate, is not something that we can entertain. So whatever your feeling is about adding another provision to this warrant article, it is out of scope and not appropriate to consider at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Article 30. We've had debate, we've had discussion, this is what you're voting on. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-05-010G, by adding the text shown underlined as set forth in the warrant, but with modifications to clauses 4A, 4D, and 4M as shown in bold in the warrant supplement distributed at this town meeting. And then, and then there are examples that you can certainly refer to in the booklet. This will require a majority vote, I'm sorry, a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? And those opposed. I declare that Article 30 has passed by the required two-thirds vote. Article 31, zoning bylaw, Section 7-05-020, classification of uses. Ms. Porteski?
Thank you. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northboro Town Code, the Northboro Zoning Bylaw, Section 7050201C, oh, no, 16C, Contractor's Yard, by deleting the text shown in strike through and adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant, but with the modifications shown in bold in the warrant supplement distributed at this town meeting.
Motion has been made and seconded.
And I just want to say that all the, well, this article and the last one did receive the unanimous approval by the planning board. Article 31, the purpose of this article is a clarification and expanding the existing definition for Contractor's Yard. The original definition just was about an open-air yard. The definition now includes an administrative offices, structures, that are used not only by construction contractors, but also subcontractors, landscapers, tradesmen, or similar businesses. These trades were not listed in the prior definition. The definition still includes their vehicles and fabrications and sales, but adds their equipment, machinery, and tools. The old definition excluded salvage materials, and now it's included as long as it's screened from view by fences or plantings. This is a broader definition and includes more types of businesses. There is no change as to where Contractor's Yard is allowed in town. This is only an update to the definition.
Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on Article 31? Yes, please.
John Campbell, 29 Spruce Hill Drive. Hey, ma'am, confused, I thought you just said it includes the sale, and yet the crossed out items are restricting sale at wholesale or retail of materials. And I also thought you just said, storage of salvage materials was included, but it's underlined at the bottom of the paragraph as now being prohibited.
It was updated per our public hearing, so I'm not sure if you're reading the supplement.
You are correct. I did not.
So it was, it was crossed out, but then it's, it's added as a sentence above it.
Forgive me, you're correct.
Any other questions, discussion, debate?
Genevieve Felker, 18 Tomahawk Drive. I may have just inferred the answer to my question, but just sort of a process clarification question, the modifications that are in bold, does that, is that what comes out of a public hearing? Is that why those are only in the motion and not?
Yes, we, we had two public hearings in April, and we talked with residents or anyone who called in and wrote a letter, and then we discussed it amongst the board. And any modifications were added in bold because the warrant was already written with the original. So any modifications are added after the fact and is added to a supplement into the warrant.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Teresa Capobianco, 29 Odo Street. So if I am a landscaper or a contractor and I run my administrative office out of my house, does this mean that my house is now a Contractor's Yard?
No, I would, well, I shouldn't, you would have to ask Rob, Bob Federico. He is the zoning enforcement officer, so he would made that, make that decision?
I understand, but you're on the planning board and this is your article. So if I have an administrative office in my house for this, doesn't it fall into a Contractor's Yard?
Thank you.
Yep, I'm not sure. We've discussed this as a board. I would ask Robert Federico.
Any other questions? Hearing none. This is what you're voting on for Article 31. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northboro Town Code, the Northboro Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-05-020-I6C, Contractor's Yard, by deleting the text shown in strike through and adding the text as underlined as set forth in the warrant, but with the modification shown in bold in the warrant supplement distributed at this town meeting, and it's shown below. This will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed. I declare that Article 31 has passed by the required two-thirds vote.
Hello, I'm Carrie Martinak. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northboro Town Code, the Northboro Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-05-030, Table of Uses, Table 1, Table of Uses, Part A, Residential Districts, by deleting the text shown in strike through and adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Your presentation, please.
Sure. So accessory dwelling units currently fall under one of our recommendations in the master plan. They help address the housing affordability issues expressed by seniors who wish to age in place in Northboro. It also addresses a need that we've heard from advocates of adults with disabilities. ADUs allow for independent living space on the family's property. This bylaw opens up the use to be a by right use in Residential A and Residential B so that you would no longer require a special permit.
Thank you. Any discussion, any debate on Article 32? Yes?
John Campbell, 29 Spruce Hill Drive. So in districts RA and RB, currently you need a special permit?
You do.
Is that before the zoning board of appeals?
That's correct.
And is there anything wrong with that process? And why was it put in place in the first place?
Yeah, we actually talked about that. We were trying to go back to history and figure out why that would be the case, and I don't think we ever came up with an answer. Kathy Duber, the town planner, I don't see her out there, but I think we had asked if there was any sort of specific history associated with that, and there really wasn't. So I think the thought for the board was, originally we talked about increasing the size because we wanted people to be able to have, if you are a senior or an adult with a disability, to have a caretaker stay in the space as well, to have enough room. So that was our original thought process. The zoning enforcement officer said that we didn't really have that as a problem in the town currently, so we stuck more to focus on, okay, let's make this easier for people. And the one way that we could do that was to open up by right so that families don't have to go through the special permit process, which can be expensive and maybe a hurdle that they can't take.
Forgive me, I don't know the zoning map. So where is RA and RB?
So RA and RB is outside of the, if you think of the main central areas, like, up towards, like, maybe a Green Street area, like, over that way. I'm pointing, like, I have a map behind me, like a weather person. But up to, away from, say, the center of town area, and say, over here, we're more in RC. So RA and RB would be towards the other end of town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, please.
Fran Bach, 76 Cedar Hill Road. To the gentleman's point, RA and RB are actually the larger land requirements, so it actually doesn't make any sense for it to have not been allowed by right when we first did it. So I just wanted to clarify that, that there's plenty of room on RA and RB, RA and RB to add an accessory unit for a family member or someone else.
Seeing no other discussion or debate on Article 32, this is what we are voting on. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northboro Town Code, the Northboro Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-05-030, Table of Uses, Table 1, Table of Uses, Part A, Residential Districts, by deleting the text shown in strike through and adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant of this meeting. This also is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed. I declare that Article 32 has passed by the required two-thirds vote. Article 33, zoning bylaw, Table of Uses, Wholesale Trade. Michelle Gillespie?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michelle Gillespie, reside at 117 Howard Street, member of the planning board. I move that the town vote to pass over this article, Article 33.
Motion's been made and seconded. And might, might you be able to tell us why you're passing over this?
Absolutely. So after reviewing this article, it was brought to our attention, by passing this article, it would affect several businesses in the town of Northboro, such as Fester Bread's, such as Zekko's, such as Armenio Coffees, and such as Ace Hardware, all which do wholesale, that this, this article would prohibit them from doing that as a business. Or other businesses moving forward would like to be similar. So this article, we're going to pass over.
Thank you. Article 33, 34.
We do need to take a vote to pass over.
You're right. Motion has been made to pass over Article 33. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, Article 33 is passed over.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Article 34, commercial storage facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, everybody, I'm Anthony Zeitin, I'm a member of the planning board. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northboro Town Code, the Northboro Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-05-030, Table of Uses, Table 1, Table of Use, Part B, Commercial and Industrial Districts, by deleting the text shown in strike through and adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Zeitin.
In ongoing efforts to fortify the types of commercial uses the town has expressed it would like along the business corridors, this amendment proposes to prohibit commercial storage facilities from locating in Business West District. A current commercial storage facility is defined in our zoning bylaw as a building or structure for the storage of goods and materials, which may include a cold storage facility or a warehouse for the storage of wholesale goods. Per our community development plan on page 61, a consultant recommended removing storage or warehousing facilities from Business West as they wanted to make it a more commercial corridor. The use is presently allowed by special permit in the industrial district and the Business South District, streets adjacent to Route 9. Business West is the only zoning district it would like, we'd like to remove it from. The building inspector and town planner confirmed we currently do not have any storage facilities in Business West. Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. Any questions or debate on Article 34? Not seeing any. This is what you're voting on for Article 34. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northboro Town Code, Northboro Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-05-030, Table of Uses, Table 1, Table of Uses, Part B, Commercial and Industrial Districts, by deleting the text shown in strike through and adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant booklet. This also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, I declare that Article 34 has passed by the required two-thirds vote. Article 35.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northboro Town Code, the Northboro Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-07-010.C5, by deleting the text shown in the strike through and adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant.
Thank you, thank you. Article, motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Zeitin.
Article 35. This is a housekeeping article for existing groundwater bylaw to add in two-family dwelling units to the restructure of sentence regarding the timing of groundwater advisory committee comments to the special permit granting authority. We're adding a reference to two-family dwelling units to clarify the planning board will be the special permit granting authority for two-family dwelling units. Currently, the zoning bylaw directs an applicant to both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, which is an oversight in the bylaw. One board needs to be the special permit granting authority. So currently, right now, if you're doing a two-dwelling household, you, you need to go to both the planning board and the ZBA, which is a two-step process, which really isn't necessary. We're trying to streamline this for the applicants. The second part of this is the sentence restructuring pertains to how the process has historically been implemented, but the existing language is not clear and needs to be modified. The groundwater advisory committee meets with the applicant prior to the public hearing held by the special permit granting authority and makes a recommendation to the special permit granting authority. Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on Article 35?
John Florica, 99 Pleasant Street. Groundwater overlay was put into place quite a few years ago, and the purpose of it, if I'm not mistaken, was to protect the wells of Northboro. Now that we are no longer using the wells of Northboro, can you answer a question for me as to why we still have a groundwater overlay?
I think, well, my answer to that would be, we are using the MWA at this point. If there's some point in the future where we would need to go back to the wells for whatever reason, I think it's important to preserve our water resources that we have in town here.
You have abandoned the wells. You've shut them down. And now you want to tell us that you're going to bring them back online? Or are we going to continue with MWA?
Okay, I think, well, you think your question's beyond the scope. You're asking for my opinion.
Not asking for your opinion, I'm asking, I'm asking for the, the purpose of it. I'm, I'm asking you to explain why we are not eliminating the groundwater overlays because we are all on MWA water now.
Well, I'm not the guy to answer that question.
Then somebody's got to answer it.
Scott Sharpton, T O D P W Director. So our wells are in inactive status. They are still permitted through Mass D E P for emergency use, so the groundwater protection areas need to remain in accordance with our Water Management Act through D E P. areas need to remain in accordance with our Water Management Act through DEP.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, over here, please.
Edward Reese, 320 Howard Street. I would just like to say that as a resident that does use the groundwater for my home, I do have a well. I do very much care about the quality of the groundwater. And even if everybody was on public water and sewer, if we have well as an emergency backup, I'd want to make sure that it works. Call me crazy.
Any other questions or debate? Hearing none. This is what we are voting on for Article 35. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-07-010.C5, by deleting the text shown in strike-through and adding the text shown as underlined, as set forth in the warrant booklet. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, I declare that Article 35 has passed by the required two-thirds vote.
Hello again. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough Zoning Bylaw, Section 7-07-010.D4,B and E, by deleting the text shown in strike-through and adding the text shown as underlined, as set forth in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Your presentation, please.
Sure. So there are two parts to this amendment. The first part is to just move a statement about the criteria into a criteria-related section of the bylaw. The second, I'm going to let that wind pass. The second part of the amendment fixes an issue where there are currently two ways to get a groundwater special permit. There should only be one path to obtain a special permit so as to not create confusion or a perception of inequity. All other special permits in our bylaw connect back to our general special permit criteria, which is in place to ensure that the adverse impact of a project does not outweigh the benefit to the town or the neighborhoods. This bylaw clears up the disconnect and brings the groundwater special permit in line with our other special permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on Article 36?
Hi, Fran Baxter, 76 Cedar Hill Road. And I just want everybody to know, it's my birthday, so I'm making the most of this day.[805.20][805.20](Laughter). This is actually something I like doing. So, well, so anyway, so I am a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I have listened to the rationale that the Planning Board has given at their public hearings, as well as a joint meeting that we had had. But I still have issues with the fact that the criteria in the special permit criteria, the general special permit criteria, in no way would benefit or affect the objective of the groundwater special permit process. The groundwater special permit process is solely responsible for ensuring that what the development that may have been allowed by right takes into consideration the consequences to the groundwater. Adding additional special permit criteria to an otherwise allowed use is just a barrier or a burden to the applicant, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, or business. And I would like to know what the Groundwater Advisory Committee and/or the town engineer, or actually even legal counsel, whether it's, if it's not required, why would we do it? Where's the benefit to the groundwater protection?
So I can speak to the part about why we pursued it. In our current bylaws, every other overlay district, whether or not it's relevant, you could say the flood, the floodplain overlay district, also ties back into the general special permit criteria. The general special permit criteria is what we agreed upon as a town of the standards for us to prove that the impact does not outweigh the benefit of a project. So there's really no harm in tying it to those standards that we drafted to protect ourselves when we see applications and projects come through. The issue that we saw with the groundwater special permit, it really started with just the fact that there are two ways to get it. You can, if you are applying just by groundwater special permit on its own, you get this smaller subset. It's carved out, a separate process, which really circumvents the main process that we use for all of our other special permits, for every other, for every other special permit that we have. I do understand what you're saying. You know, you might say, well, traffic doesn't apply to groundwater, so why would we apply that? And in that case, we could simply say, that's just not an applicable criteria that we would make a decision on. The one thing, the one problem we really need to solve is that getting two ways to get a special permit is not fair if someone gets to pick one path and another person picks the other. And I guess that's sort of the struggle of trying to figure out how to resolve that in the best way possible without, you know, looking back at past decisions since 2005, the logic we've applied has been the criteria. Just one other point. Last year at town meeting, we voted to make almost all the industrial uses for, almost all the industrial uses are now special permits anyway. So it doesn't add, all of a sudden, you know, they're not by right anymore, they're by special permit. But I do understand what you're saying about that.
And I appreciate that. I mean, I wasn't focused on the industrial, but it just doesn't make sense to me if all I need is a special permit because I happen to be in groundwater protection overlay District 3, why should I have to now go through a special permit process, a general special permit process, with a lot of additional steps that have no bearing on the issue at hand? I would like to know whether the town engineer or the groundwater advisory council weighed in on this.
Yes. So we, thank you, Fran. We went to, we presented at groundwater, and we talked about this, the merits of it. And I think that the groundwater advisory committee opted to not formally send a memo, but rather make their own individual opinions known. I don't think, Fred Litchfield is the town engineer, and he did not think that it would be necessary to do. And I think that's okay. What we're saying as a planning board is that we have a situation in our bylaws where there's two ways to get a permit. So how do we solve that? And if we've, and if we're bringing it in line with how we've made decisions since 2005, that seems like a more sensical way to do it than try to unravel all of that. But, you know, that's up for everyone to decide. And if it's not something that we want to do, that's okay, too. We just wanted to bring it forward.
Yes, please.
Ed Rank, 27 Samuel Gamwell Road. Had a few questions about this amendment.
Sure.
Which of the seven special permit criteria that you want to add to the groundwater bylaw actually relates to the protection of the quality of the groundwater? Doesn't the town get our water from the MWRA? So why are we placing more restrictions to the existing three criteria in the groundwater bylaw when we are not using the town wells? And finally, the groundwater advisory committee works closely with these bylaws? Did the planning board reach out to the groundwater advisory committee for their input? And if so, did that committee feel there was a need to expand the criteria?
Sure. So the last question I just answered, and that was that we did go to the groundwater advisory committee, and they opted not to make a recommendation, to get to your first part. So we're actually not adding criteria to this specific portion. What we're doing is we're linking in by that one line in there that says, going back to the general special permit criteria that already exists. So we've already, as a town, approved the general special permit criteria. This just adds a link to it, similar to our floodwater, our flood, excuse me, the floodplain overlay. All of our overlays have this connection, all of our other special permits have the connection. It's just making the connection here as well. And to your point, if the criteria doesn't make sense for that particular case, we would just say not applicable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Richard Novich, 34 Samuel Gamwell Road. I'd like to just start with a question following up on, I think, your comment on Article 32. And I believe you said that the purpose of the article was to make it easier for homeowners to be able to use or modify their property. My question for you is, on this article, does this particular article make it easier or harder for homeowners to make modifications for their use of their property?
That's a good question. Let me think through your question. So I don't see how that would really impact a homeowner in this case. If you're going for a groundwater special permit...
Well, you're adding seven more criteria, if I'm understanding your amendment right.
So, well, the special permits that the Planning Board covers are in the industrial zone, so it really wouldn't impact a homeowner necessarily. And then in the industrial district, we voted last year to do special permits.
Homeowners can be in these types of districts, though, right?
No, you'd be in residential if you owned a home. You wouldn't live in industrial.
If I owned a home, this article would not apply to me at all?
I don't think you'd be doing a groundwater project at home.
If I wanted to put in a pool and I lived in this overlay area, I would not be subject to this bylaw?
Well, I don't know. Let me see. Bob, do you mind answering? If someone wanted to put in a pool, would they have a groundwater bylaw?
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Frederico. I'm the zoning enforcement officer. If you were to put a pool in a property that is within the groundwater protection overlay district, whether it's 1, 2, or 3, there's an impervious cover worksheet that needs to be filled out. And depending upon the amount of impervious surface you're adding to your property, you may have to do some sort of a recharge system. That is something that's worked out generally within the scope of the building and zoning office and the town engineer. Yeah, town engineer.
So while I've got you on the stand, if maybe you could answer this question. If I was a person in a residential area under that particular scenario, would it cost me more or less with the amendment that is being proposed now to put in that pool?
It would depend upon if you had to recharge the water that you are now, because of your increase of the impervious surface.
But given the seven additional criteria that are being suggested that we add to the article, such as, you know, traffic, et cetera, would I have to pay an engineer to address those issues in order to get the permit to be able to use my property and install a pool?
It would depend on the issue.
All right. So the answer is it could cost me a whole lot more based upon the amendment that's being proposed?
There's always the potential for that.
I'm asking you as a professional who is on the board or who is addressing this issue, is this amendment, does it have the possibility to cost me more as a homeowner if this amendment passes?
That's for the Planning Board to decide and give you that answer.
Okay. And the chairman of the Planning Board, I think, is speaking. So I'm asking you, ma'am, would this particular amendment cost me more as a homeowner?
I've literally never had a homeowner come to the Planning Board with a pool. So I don't know if we have. Kathy, have we ever had a homeowner come to the Planning Board with a pool application? I don't see Kathy. I can't see that far. Hold on. Oh, so ZBA, you'd go to ZBA. So that would be for the ZBA. We don't, here, I don't, if you were doing something that had that much impervious cover for your pool, that would be already part of what the groundwater bylaws exist as is, not anything to do with additional criteria. It's really just linking it back, and if it's not applicable, we would just say it's not applicable.
Does the proposed amendment give you the ability to make it not applicable? As I read it, it does not.
Yeah, it does. With any other application that we look at, we can say if something's not applicable to the application.
One other question. Can you tell me how our boards to measure the impact to the groundwater against the special permit criteria, that it will not adversely affect the neighborhood?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If that wasn't the case, you would just say not applicable. I think the point is to just make everything so that everybody follows the same rules no matter what, so that we don't have people picking a different path depending on if it benefits them. Just to make sure we have the protections in place. I think the overall goal is to just make sure, no matter what, that the benefit always outweighs the impact.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Teresa Capelbinko, 29 Oda Street. I sit on the groundwater advisory committee. I am not in support of this amendment. It imposes an undue burden on businesses and residences attempting to make changes to their properties that would not otherwise need to follow special permit criteria. By imposing the general special permit criteria on groundwater, these applicants now need to go through additional processes, hire engineers or other experts, that could be very, very costly. And there is little or no gain to the analysis under the groundwater bylaws. So I do not support this. And as a member of the groundwater advisory committee, I do not believe that this is a necessary bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your input.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Donahue, 30 Woodstone Road. I also raise, stand in objection to the proposed warrant article. The suggestion of the chair that there is an inconsistency, I think misses the point. Under the table of uses, if a use requires a special permit, the so-called general special permit standard applies, and you look at whether it's good for the neighborhood. So to use an example, if, for example, somebody wanted to put in a drive-through service center in some fashion, they would need a special permit under the general standard permit. If that property is also in the groundwater protection overlay, they need a groundwater protection overlay district special permit. And our bylaw has presently specific requirements for groundwater, which is more scientifically based than the subjective standard applying for a general special permit. And that's appropriate in those cases. But where use is permitted as of right under the table of uses, to suggest that because it is located in the groundwater, the scientific basis shouldn't apply, the general standard should apply, is inaccurate. And the suggestion that if it doesn't apply, we'll just say it's inapplicable, ignores the fact that often these projects that are as of right do bring objections because of the use. An example is, for example, grandfather uses under our present bylaw that are now specially permitted. And therefore, there's the potential by creating this general bylaw for what was very specific of being misused appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just say that all of our current special permits and all the other overlays have the same connection. And I think that if you go by the rationale that as long as there's a different criteria, you can nullify the general special permit criteria, you know, if that's a risk that we want, that's okay. We're just bringing that forward as a problem and presenting a possible solution. And this is obviously the place to talk about it and decide if it makes sense. So thank you for your input.
Hi, this is Vikram Verma, 33 Tomahog Drive. There's a line you are crossing out saying, "Such special permit shall be granted if the special permit granting authority determines that the intent of this chapter, as well as its specific criteria, are met." I believe that statement gives some assurance to people that if a special permit needs to be granted, it will be granted. There's a "shall" here, which is not there in any other place in this, in this article. So you are removing a "shall," which means basically that it's becoming more fickle, that you may or may not grant it even if all the criteria are met.
Yes. We, this is something the Planning Board brought forth a couple of years ago in terms of "shall" versus "may." And "shall" often implies it must be voted approved, whereas "may" is a, I think it's just more of like a legal-type "shall" versus "may" thing that we've started to put forth in our...
I believe the sentence is clear that if it determines that the intent of this chapter, as well as its specific criteria are met, people need some certainty that if they meet everything that the section says, then it will be granted. It's not like, "I believe so, that's why I won't grant it."
Oh, are you referring to the section that we're moving?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that's just a simple movement of the text. So in that case, what we did, the reason for that is because it was, that was a criteria item, and that the section it was under was about how people should file with the town clerk, which didn't make sense. So in that case, we're not actually adding that text or changing it. We're just moving it so that it's, it's almost... it so that it's almost, just makes it clear. It's part of criteria versus how you'd file, how many copies, things like that.
No, it says "such special permit shall be granted," and what you have at the end, what you moved, is the special permit granting authority shall give consideration to something. It's not, "it shall be granted."
Yep.
So, I think this line was an assurance that if you do everything that needs to be done, the permit will be granted. Now, everywhere it says it may be granted.
So, that was something we did a few, we passed a few years ago to change "shall" to "may."
So, in this write-up, it's been canceled now, isn't it?
Yes, and we're moving the second line and bringing it down under the criteria section. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, oh. Oh, okay, yes. I'm sorry. Kathy, clarify. I didn't understand your question. So, your question is why are we removing that sentence?
Yes.
Okay. So, for that sentence, we are, it was not moved down there because we no longer say "shall," for that's saying that it must be approved, and we've changed things to say "may." I suppose something could be added to say "such special permit may be granted" instead. Is that, are you proposing something like that?
No, I'm saying the "shall" there was an assurance that if you meet the intent of this chapter and it's a specific criteria, then there's no problem. You will be granted a permit.
Right.
But you canceled that out.
Yes.
So, you want to make it more fickle instead of more accurate? That you want to remove the certainty from this?
Well, I think that the board would evaluate the application and then make the decision if it would be approved or not, versus "shall" being a guarantee. There's no guarantee in any application.
This "shall" links to the intent of the chapter and specific criteria.
Yep.
So, if you meet the law, you shall get what you deserve. That's what it says.
Right.
And you're canceling it out.
That's right.
Okay. I don't support this then.
Okay.
Over here, please.
Thank you. Laura Zeit, I'm sorry. My name is Laura Zeit, and I live at 17 Franklin Circle. I appreciate the fact that we're looking to streamline this process and make it easier for applicants. I think it's important that we do all that we can to protect the land for the entire people, the entire town, and not just individual people. So, if adding these extra criteria is going to make it safer for all of us, I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair, there seems sufficient confusion on this article and how it's worded that I wonder if you'd consider passing over it until a time when it can be better explained.
Yeah. I don't know if I get to make that choice, but I mean, I would like to see if us vote on it, and if we don't want this, if we don't want to vote on it and we don't pass it, I'd rather that, to know that we actually have an opinion on it than just to pass on it. But I don't know, if people want to pass over it, that's okay too. That's up to the, this is our meeting, and people get to decide what we do, and if we want to pass over it, that's okay too.
Over here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Michelle Gillespie. I reside at 117 Howard Street, and I am a member of the Northborough Planning Board. I voted in "no" of this bylaw, and there's two reasons. And I actually specifically think that if you're a homeowner or a business owner, that this bylaw will directly affect you. I think the bylaw, I think the vote should go back to the planning board to go work on it some more, because it has, it is too confusing, and it does affect, and has certain effects on homeowners that we talked about with regards to pools and decks. It has effects on businesses, all which were brought up at meetings, but more specifically, the planning board had a discussion with this, with the ZBA, and the ZBA, in a majority, came back not seeing it as a problem, not suggesting that it should be changed, and not endorsing it. They basically messaged, said, "Good luck. You know, we think you need to work on this." I do not remember the planning board having a discussion or any feedback from groundwater advisory on this, so I would not say that what Ms. Martinek is saying is correct. And so, I'm asking you to vote "no" on this as a message back to the planning board to go work on it and not to bring unattended consequences to homeowners and businesses, which is not our intention.
So, I don't think that was the intention, and I think that the memo from the ZBA that they didn't have an opinion at the time, and that we did go to groundwater and bring it up to groundwater. So, I don't, maybe that was something that you misunderstood, but I think we did get adequate feedback there. Again, it's okay if we don't want to vote for this. It's just something, it's a problem in our current bylaw. We flagged it as a problem. We're trying to find a solution for it, and if it's not something we're comfortable passing, that's okay too. But I think it's important to be able to bring it here and have a good discussion about it and see if it's something that we want to do or not.
Over here, please.
John Wickstead from Tuster Brook Lane. I had a question about this. As I understand it, just to clarify my own understanding of this, there's currently two pathways that you can approach to get a groundwater special permit, and one of them is less stringent than the other. And that less stringent criteria avoids the special permit general criteria. What are those special permit general criteria, number one? And number two, why would we have two pathways, one of which is less stringent than the other?
Right. So, that's the problem that we're trying to fix, because if there are two pathways and one is less stringent than the other, then there's a perception of inequality for different applicants get different, a different set of rules applied to them. So, that's the issue we're trying to fix. If looking back through our decisions, going back to 2005, we've always applied both to these types of applications. So, it just was in line with the way that we've actually been rendering our decisions. The special permit criteria, there's seven components of it. It's basically ways that we can figure out whether a project, whether the impact outweighs the benefit. So, if it's in substantial harmony with the master plan, if the site's in appropriate location, if it won't adversely affect the neighborhood, if there won't be serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided, the proposed use will conform to any special requirements, and that the proposed use couldn't be reasonably altered. So, they're not terribly difficult hurdles, and if it doesn't apply, we just say that's not applicable to this. But at least it gives us other things, specifically conforming to special requirements. It can't be altered, is in line with the master plan. There's no reason why our special permit shouldn't meet that simple criteria if we want to continue to have that measure in place to make sure that the applications we get are safe and make sense, and they don't impact the neighborhoods poorly.
I mean, I can see how those special permit criteria might affect a large business doing a large development, but I can't imagine that a homeowner is going to have to hire a traffic engineer for their pool. I think that's disingenuous.
Thank you.
I urge your support of this.
I have a motion on the floor to move the question. Motion has been seconded. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your cards. Those opposed, motion carries. We are now voting on Article 36. This requires a two-thirds vote. I move the town vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough zoning bylaw, Section 7-07-010, D4B and E, by deleting the text shown in strike-through and adding the text shown as underlined, as set forth in the warrant. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, I'm going to have to have the tellers come out, please. And they thought they could get away with it. So, you ready? Let's go. Will all those in favor of Article 36, please raise your cards and keep them up, please. Raise them high and keep them up. Say the number again, Rick. Thirty-one, thank you. Thirteen, thank you. Twenty-seven, thank you. And three, thank you. Zero. And six, thank you. So, you got them all? They're all counted. All right. Take your cards down. Those opposed, Article 36. Seven. Twenty-nine. Say that again, please. Ten, thank you. And sixteen. Nine. Have we got them all? Okay. You can take your cards down, please. Thank you. Okay, we have the count now. Article 36 did not carry. The numbers were 80 yes, 71 no. It was a two-thirds required vote. Article 37, special permit requirements.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I make the move, I move the town to vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough zoning bylaw, Chapter 708, nonconforming uses and structures, Section 708, 010A, and 708, 020A, by deleting the text shown in strike-through and adding the text shown as underlined, as set forth in the warrant. And this was approved unanimously by the planning board.
And I have a second. Motion's been made and seconded. Town council, actually, we consulted before the meeting, and town council let me know that Article 37, just to note that there is a typo in the warrant where the, where the section number 7-08-02 is printed in the body of the article. The first zero before the two zero is missing, but that number's not being amended by this article, so there's no need to make a change as we act on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. The purpose of this is a housekeeping article to clarify the nonconforming uses in structures section of the zoning bylaw. Per mass general law, changes to a nonconforming use are supposed to trigger an application for a special permit in front of the zoning board of appeals. The amendments to this bylaw were formed through the planning board consultation with town council. The planning board agreed with the changes recommended per town council review. We added the sentence stating, "It will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing use to the neighborhood." This is a universal phrase that's used in towns and recommended to be used by the state and town council. Per town council, extension or alteration is being added to the applicability section of the bylaw, and detrimental is being replaced by the words "less nonconforming." These modifications will assist the board in narrowing the ability of a nonconforming use or structure to expand to something potentially larger in size without proper review. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion, or debate on Article 37? Yes?
Sorry. Fran Baxter, 76 Cedar Hill Road.
Oh, Fran, happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. So, this article, while it appears that changing the word "change" to extend or alter is actually significant when we're talking about use, whether it's conforming or nonconforming. So, as an example, Richie Bus Company, which was on the Southwest cutoff, became a nonconforming use over the decades. When the property was sold and the truck tarp company wanted to go there, they had to apply, come before the zoning board for a nonconforming use. If this was the language then, they would not have been allowed because it was a change in a nonconforming use that was determined to be no more detrimental than the original. And actually, it's fine where it is. It hasn't had, there's been no issues with it. So, removing the word "change" to extend or alter will limit the opportunities for someone to take that piece of property and use it for a different purpose that is equal or less detrimental than what had been there. Thank you.
Any other discussion, question, or debate? Yes?
Scott Ferretsky, 47 Indian Meadow Drive. Did you say that the purpose of these changes is to comply with Massachusetts law? And the wording was decided by our own town council?
A section of the wording was, the, the sentence I read, that it will not be substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. That was to comply with the state law. That was the statement that was added.
Any other questions, discussion, debate? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on for Article 37. I move the town vote to amend Part VII of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough zoning bylaws, bylaw, Chapter 7 dash zero eight, Nonconforming Uses and Structures, Section 7 dash zero eight dash zero one zero A and seven dash zero eight dash zero two zero A, by deleting the text shown in strike through and adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant. This will be a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed. I declare that Article 37 is, passes by the required two-thirds vote. Article 38. Chairman Jason Perro.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22H, inserted by Chapter 218 of the Acts of 2018, known as an Act Relative to Veterans' Benefits, Rights, Appreciation, Validation, and Enforcement, otherwise known as the Brave Act.
Do I get a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Presentation is by Justin Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Justin Souza, Veterans Service Director for the Town of Northborough. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22H, is the Gold Star Parents' Property Tax Exemption. It's a local option. Per DOR, the Department of Revenue, it's not reimbursable by the Commonwealth. The full exemption of real estate taxes to be granted to surviving parents or guardians of active-duty military, National Guard, or veterans who died as a proximate result of injuries sustained or illnesses contracted during active-duty service, or who went missing in action during active duty and are presumed to have died. Regardless of the date of death or missing action date, the exemption shall only apply to tax years beginning on or after January 1st, 2019. And there is a residency requirement, five consecutive years residency in Mass before the tax year begins, or the service member has to have been domiciled in Massachusetts for at least six consecutive months before entering the service. And the exempted property must be the domicile of those receiving the exemption. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. Any questions, or concerns, or debate on Article 38?
Hi, my name is Michelle Gillespie, and I reside at 117 Howood Street. I'm a member of the Borough's Cares for Troops, and I'm also one of the members who started our Hometown Heroes Banner Program. I don't think there is any greater gift that you can give a Gold Star family than this, so I ask you to vote yes on this warrant.
Hi, George Frankel, 3 Little Pond Road. When I first saw this article, I agree very much with Michelle's sentiments. I mean, how could you say, vote against this? But I started thinking about it, and I came up with three issues that I think we should all consider as we go forward. First, the first issue is this is a little unlike all of the other financial decisions we've made in the warrant articles we voted at, in that this is philanthropy. And while I support the issue, do I or do we here have the right to make this kind of philanthropic decision for all the members of Northborough? So that's one issue. The second issue revolves around equity. And in passing the Brave Act, while I'm fully in support of the intent, the mechanism seems a little strange in tying it to property taxes with the town-by-town decision. And so there's a geographical potential inequity in that some towns will pass it and some towns won't. The second area of inequity is more socio-economic. In, for example, if, say, a relatively well-off town passes this so that there's a property tax exemption on a million-dollar piece of property in a, in a rich town, how does that help a Gold Star, Gold Star parents who are renting in a different town? And so I'm concerned about the equity aspects of it, is, is the way this bill is being, the way this is being presented is actually meeting its intent. And the third point is, after thinking about this, I started looking into all the various organizations that provide support to our veterans. And I definitely think this is something we all need to do something about. These are people who put themselves in harm's way for us. They go where we send them. Some of them don't come back. A great many more come back damaged in some way, either physically, emotionally, spiritually. And so I think we all need to do something to take care of the needs of those that come back, who have sacrificed for us. In looking at what's available out there, very quickly, I assure you, you can find a multitude of organizations that offer support, whether it's for veterans with physical disabilities, whether it's addressing mental health issues or homelessness among our veterans, or even for Gold Star families in supporting, for example, children of, children who have a parent, mother or father, who did not come back. So after thinking about this, I'm not sure I can support this, and I would encourage everyone to think about those three points before they make the decision to vote for this. Thank you.
My name is Rick Nieber. I live at 62 Whitney Street. I am a veteran, and I'm all for anything to help veterans, members of the military, and their immediate families. This is an article that unfortunately cannot be amended, just accepted, or rejected. And for that reason, I personally recommend voting against accepting this article for the following reasons. This article was poorly written and thought out, and I'm sure would have been done better by the state if the state had a stake in the game. They just leave it entirely up to the communities to implement and fund. The person who should really receive this benefit isn't even considered, and that's the Gold Star spouse and/or children of the service member. Not only did they lose their loved one, but also their main provider and caregiver. The parents already own a home, with or without a mortgage, and have been paying their taxes, so their need is not as compelling compared to the service member's spouse and children. And this act only considers the parents, only parents with a home. I'm sorry, this act only considers the parents with a home. If the parents are renting a house, condo, apartment, or any other living arrangements, they receive no benefit at all, hardly just. Moreover, this act just isn't for a true act of valor, such as being killed in combat, but for any enlisted soldier, sailor, or member of the National Guard that dies by any cause while in the service. That could be from COVID, a heart attack at their desk job, or just getting drunk while on liberty and dying in a car wreck. You'll also notice that the Air Force and Space Force has not been mentioned here. The only place these people have picked up is because this act also applies to veterans. And the veterans are eligible only if they succumb to this, to a, only if they succumb due to an illness or a wound received attributed to their service. This is more a feel-good act by the state, but we have to look at it in reality as its future ramifications. This is a lifetime property tax exemption with no means testing. There are currently 2,324 homes in Northborough whose owners will be directly affected by this act. Depending on the home, the tax exemption can be anywhere from 5K to 20K for each home every year. And this will, this tax will increase each year. That can continue for over 50 years, depending on the age of the parents at the time of the filing. That tax loss will automatically be made up by increasing the taxes of the remaining homeowners in town. For one or two families, the rest of us can probably handle that. But with the tax savings, the parents may decide to move on to a higher-value home. That tax, that home will now be tax-free. And that's only the beginning. We already know from past experiences that families have moved to our town for its school system and excellent services. If this article is passed, just how many more Gold Star parents from local communities, even from around the state, will think about moving here to gain all the amenities of our town at no cost to them? This will easily then have a substantial impact to all other homeowners beyond what is already in the works, like the much-needed fire department, which will probably be a debt exclusion. There are other items in the town's master plan, and there will be more unforeseen items as well. So it's a given that our taxes will increase, probably substantially. But this is one increase, one unnecessary increase, and poorly thought-out increase, that we can do something about by not passing it. I'll end this by just saying, I firmly believe that those who have voluntarily enlisted and laid their life on the line for their country, for us, would be ashamed to know that their final act, the giving of their life, could cause a hardship to those same people. So please consider voting no on this article. Voting no does not mean that you honor or sympathize with the parents any less. It means that you honor their child's ideals more.
Over here, please.
Jeff Amberson, 260 Green. I guess I'd just like a clarification from the Veterans Agent. Can people retroactively move to Northborough and take advantage of this?
Do you mean from previous tax years, or?
No, I, somebody, I don't know, from, you know, Westboro?
As, as the law is written, if they move from Westboro to Northboro and are eligible for the exemption, they'd be able to get it for that tax year, and every year going forward, as a resident of the town.
Thank you.
Hi, Mitch Cohen, 12 Whitney Street. I think this is a very good intent, and I agree with some of the prior comments that it's not ideal. It's still a good intent, and I still am going to vote for it because it gets us in the right direction with honoring those who have fallen for the country. My question is, it was, it was asked a little bit, but it wasn't answered. Is there such an option available for spouses who, I agree?
Clause 22D, full exemption for surviving spouses.
Okay, was that considered to be brought forward, or have we already passed it?
That's already recognized.
By, by the town? Fantastic. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hello, Laura Folsom, 4 Laurel Avenue. I would just like to say, having grown up in Germany as a military brat, I think that the parents of these fallen soldiers have already paid a price that I hope none of us ever have to pay. So I would urge you to vote in favor. And for the veterans among us, thank you for your service.
Yes, please.
Hi, Erica Zeiger, 2 Stratton Way. I encourage everyone to vote yes for this. My husband, Brian, retired after 21 years of active service and is currently at Hanscom Air Force Base. I worked for military families for 15 years, and the last 10 specifically with Gold Star families. Many of the discussion points that came up regarding equity were addressed at the state level. We under, you know, they understood that some towns are able to pass it and some are. However, the majority felt that it was something that should be, should be passed and given the states the option. The majority of parents have raised their children. Obviously, their children were in the military, paid the ultimate sacrifice, and the moving here for schools doesn't necessarily make sense. The majority of the families, military families, are not wealthy. So the million-dollar home, of course, it's possible, but the majority will not be moving into a million-dollar home. I'm glad it was answered about the spouses, as many of, I work with widows specifically, and the majority of my widows do receive the property tax abatement. They do have to remain unremarried, and when you lose your spouse at 19 years old, to know that the only, you may have to remain a widow in order to get this property tax is hard for a lot of them. So again, I just encourage everyone, I thank you, Justin, for bringing this to our town, and I'm happy to answer any questions along with Justin as well. Thank you.
Yes, over here. Over here.
Mary Youssef, Johnson Avenue. I am in full support of the intention and the idea behind this act, but like people before me have said, I don't believe that it has been fully thought out. So if we vote yes on it now, I believe that we would be missing certain amendments that would make it better. And in a future act, we might be able to take these ideas and incorporate it into an article that would be even better, especially considering that it's just considering the parents, and also people mentioned that it is property tax, and there are many veterans who return and they don't have a home. They don't even, you know, they're not even given like the medical services that they may have been promised. So I feel like we could do something even better if we reconsidered this and thought it out more. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Doug Stone, 33 Birch Hill Road, and my dad is a World War II veteran. And I certainly have plenty of respect for all the veterans. And I think earlier, the point that was brought up about the last thing that they would want to do is put a burden on us. And I think that the point that it could impact our taxes significantly, that we should hear from the finances committee here, or the assessor, or somebody to have a shot at an estimate of what this financial impact would be when we're losing the income from those taxpayers. those taxpayers.
So just in, in general, so the average, average single-family home tax bill is about just shy of $8,000 a year. So as far as the impact, I mean, all I can tell you is that's an average tax bill. And so over 10 years, it's $80,000 to $100,000. That, that's basically the only information I can give you. It's, it's, it's an exemption on the local taxes, so that's what an average tax bill is. It will go up. That's about all I can tell you.
So how many, how much are we potentially going to lose?
It's, it's, it's less a, a, a loss, it's, and it's an abatement. So, so those taxes would not get paid is the way it would work.
Well, how many in town are going to benefit from this?
I, I don't know. They, we, we won't know until it's passed.
Well, I think that we should vote this down until we decide how much the impact is going to be.
Yeah, there's just, there's no way to know that impact. They would have to self-identify and, and come forward, so.
Yeah, there, there's no metric in place to track the, like, Gold Star families. They have to self-identify at the assessor's office, so. I mean, we can't even track how many veterans we have in town accurately unless they self-identify, so.
Well, we're asking, like the person said, we're asking everyone to be a donor. Philanthropy.
My name is the moderator. May I answer to that?
Yes, please.
If you don't mind, I'll, I'll answer from the desk. This is my, my personal opinion, nothing to do with the board. When I looked into this, right now, as I said earlier, one or two families in town that apply for this, we can probably handle that. That's no, no real big deal. What I'm looking for is in the future. The next five years can make a big difference. Right now, there's no actual number of how many Gold Star families we have, but there are 438,000 Gold Star families registered. How many of those have moved to our town? How many would take advantage of this act? I don't know. But taxes going up every year, $10,000 for one family, you've got 10 families in, there's $100,000 that the rest of us have to share. And I don't think any of these veterans, like I said, would want to put that burden on us. And that's all I have for numbers. I can't say much else about it. Thank you.
Yes, over here, please.
Hi, Carter Brandon, 22 Sherland Drive. Do we know how many other towns have or have not adopted this?
No.
Okay, that was just a question, if, if that would mean anything.
When I was putting forth this article, it didn't really matter because it's a local option specific to our town.
Yes, please.
Erica Zeiger, again, 2 Stratton Way. As far as how many towns have adopted it, as far as towns that govern like we do, I know there's at least probably about eight to 10. Some of the larger cities are, are holding, holding back. I do know Ashland, Sudbury, Beverly, Hingham. So there's, there's quite a few that have already passed this. Hopefully that answers it.
Over here, please.
Hi, Ed Reese, 320 Howard Street. To sum up what I'm hearing here, it sounds like we put forward what is objectively a very good idea, but without considering what the impact would be to the people of Northborough and without even the means to figure out what the impact would be to the people of Northborough. And unless you just have very vast supplies of disposable income, that's not a financially responsible thing to do, to just decide that you're going to commit everybody to paying for a philanthropical pursuit, that you have no idea how much it's going to actually cost them.
And over here.
Yeah, Jeff Amberson, 260 Green. I'm wondering, Mr. Moderator, is it possible to modify this motion where it says shall have been domiciled for the five consecutive years in the Commonwealth? If we can change Commonwealth to Northborough?
My understanding is it can't be modified. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Just one quick thing. Kristen Wickstead, 2 Stur brick lane. I think the idea that people want to budget for this and prepare for this, if it could be done, John Koder would already be doing it. We all know that that's his thing, right? So this is more a concern of the heart. I married to a veteran. I was a military wife for a while while he was in the National Guard. This isn't something that you can prepare for. The families in our town who are Gold Star families are heroes to me, and I think they're heroes to a lot of us. And this isn't something that, I mean, it's fine if you don't want to be a philanthropist towards the Gold Star families, then don't vote for it. But those of us who do appreciate what they've sacrificed, I think it's, it's worth while entertaining this motion and voting on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last comment.
Norm Corbin from 35 Whitney Street. To be honest, I think, I think this is a good idea, but I would prefer if the town would come up with its own idea to push something like this through rather than have it strictly by the state. Thank you.
Okay, we are on Article 38, and we've had plenty of discussion. Now, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22H, inserted by Chapter 218 of the Acts of 2018, known as an Act Relative to Veterans' Benefits, Rights, Appreciation, Validation, and Enforcement, the Brave Act. This is a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed. Article 38 did not pass. Article 39. Compression Brake Prohibition. Select person, Leslie Rutan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to everyone who has stuck with us for four hours now. We appreciate it very, very much, very important to the community. Article 39. I move the town vote to amend Part 2 of the Northborough Town Code, Chapter 2-44, Peace and Good Order, by adding the text shown as underlined as set forth in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. We have a presentation by Chief Liver.
Mr. Moderator. On a lighter note and very simply, this was raised by several residents in town seeking for some relief from truck noise. An engine brake, you've probably all heard them in the past. It's, the engine uses exhaust compression. It is reversed and put back into the engine, and it, the compression facilitates braking on the truck. They're most commonly used to eliminate excessive wear on the truck's regular brakes. They're also an emergency braking function for steep hills with long downgrades, which we really don't have any of in Northborough. Again, most drivers or owner-operators prefer to use them instead of the regular brakes on a truck. You have probably all heard them in the middle of the summer. If you live anywhere by 290 or Church Street with trucks coming off the street, you hear that big rumbling noise, or you may be walking down the street and a truck is going by, and it's activated by simply taking the foot off the accelerator pedal. The engine compression, again, just works to slow the engine down. There really is no need to use them in Northborough. Bylaw does allow for the trucks to use them on an emergency basis. If a truck loses its actual brakes, the compression brake can't actually bring the truck almost to a complete stop. It would be done after public hearing before the board on a street-by-street basis. There are obviously some streets that it really should not have a prohibition on them. For instance, if you're a moving van driver and you're bringing a 40-foot trailer box down Ball Street or Green Street, you would want to be able to use your compression brake, and there's not that much truck traffic on either of those streets. I was tasked by the town administrator to research this, and I checked with many other towns, they do have them. And the simply, the input I got from numerous chiefs was the simple erection of signs saying no engine braking. Reduced quite a bit of it just to begin with because truck drivers do not want to have fines. It comes out of their, their pocket. There is a provision to cite the owner of a truck because some owners have permanent compression brakes, where normally they're activated, turned off by the operator. But some trucks have a permanent, slang term is jake brakes, not a slang, it's an abbreviated term. One of the first manufacturers was the Jacobs Company, and it being known as a jake brake, which is copyrighted. So the signs have to say no engine braking or compression braking. That's basically simply what it is. And again, it's on heavier truck routes to quiet some of the trucking down. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes, please.
Hi, Edward Reese, 320 Howard Street. I'm tentatively in favor of this, but I'd just like to know, does this apply to the interstate highways like I-290? And if so, how would that be enforced?
The answer to that would be no. We only, our bylaws can only apply to town-owned and controlled roads, not state highways. Matter of fact, we couldn't impose, make this restriction on Route 20. It's a state highway. Route 9, Route 20, and I-290 would not. This would just be strictly on town roads, South Street, Church Street.
Yes, please.
Kelly, 69 North Gate Road. How is this enforced and enforceable? Is it like only if the police see the person doing it, or do they?
Well, it's normally enforced by an officer that sees it, like any other motor vehicle violation. However, as with motor vehicle violations, if someone calls and reports it and they wish to be a witness for us, we can issue the citation, but the person that actually witnessed it would have to, if the person appealed, actually, it, it wouldn't go to court. It would be a hearing on, they're not, they're not criminal citations. It's civil, so.
Any other discussion on Article 39?
George Brankel, 3 Little Pond Road. Do we have an idea of how big a problem this is right now? You know, particularly, like, how often is it? And is it on town roads, or is it primarily on I-290 and Route 20, which this won't address?
It's on all town roads. It's, you can hear it on Bartlett Street, they use them on Church Street, coming into the center of town, slowing down. Again, they use the, the compression brake to not use their regular brakes to save the wear and tear on the engine. I can tell you that I've heard them myself personally all around town.
Any other discussion? Hearing, no other discussion. Oh, we have a waving hand.
So Manny Lopes on 96 Bartlett Street. So first of all, yeah, it is a problem, and it happens every day on Bartlett Street. So I'm definitely in favor of this. My question is, how did you arrive at the penalty for this? Because $100 for Amazon is nothing.
That's the first offense. The second offense is 300.
And that's still nothing. Bezos makes that in, what, 30 seconds?
Just, it's not Amazon that would get the fine. Amazon does not own the trucks that tow their trailers. They're privately operated, or they're small trucking companies. It would be the operators of those trucks, not Amazon.
Okay. Still, is there $100? How does that get arrived at? Is that a state limit? I know one of the earlier fines, 300 was the max. So what, what determined the basis for the fine for these tractor-trailer trucks?
The same chapter and section as the earlier one, Chapter 40, 21D, I believe, that sets the limits on municipal bylaw fines.
Okay, so that's the $300 that was on the previous one?
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions? Hearing, none. This is what we're voting on for Article 39. I move the town vote to amend Part 2 of the Northborough Town Code, Chapter 2-44, Peace and Good Order, by adding the text shown as underlined and set forth in the warrant. This is a majority vote? Sorry. Wow. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Article 39 passes. And now we're going to take the next two hours for reports. Anyone that wishes to come forward and give a report about what they did this past summer, they're welcome to come up and do that. If we get no takers, I want to take this time to say several things. Number one, thank you all for hanging in there and doing your civic duty and being part of this town meeting. Secondly, I want to thank the employees and the boards, committees, and commissions, and anyone else that's been working on projects that we presented during this meeting. Thank you. We all appreciate your efforts. There has been a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor? I declare this town meeting has been dissolved.
Extra cheese, $7.49. Yucatan guacamole, ranging in size from 12 to 16 ounce, $2 off. Taste of Inspiration Dip, buy one, get one free.